Thank you.
And I think for our pledge of allegiance, we have students from, I don't have my glasses on, did I see it was from?
Union.
Union. And we have Jonas Pittman, and Aiden Barrier, and James Candelino.
Candelino.
Candelino, I knew I'd get it wrong, so. Thank y'all for coming, and I'm gonna turn it over to you with all your lead guys. Ladies and gentlemen.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Very good. And they did recite it, I watched them. First on our agenda is the approval of the minutes. For those, we did have a regularly scheduled meeting on December the 2nd. Thank you all very much. And also the special call meeting on January 9th. I think all the boards had a chance to review those. And if we have any questions, corrections? Have a motion to your second. No, for seconds, all in favor, signal by saying aye. Any opposed? So moved. Spotlight of people in programs. Dr. Baldwin.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we have two recognitions tonight. The first recognition is for Stephanie Braswell, who has completed her national board certification. I don't think she's with us tonight, but I'll just share her words of Senator Jerry Tillman, co-chair of Education Corporations Committee, who said that it takes time and effort to achieve its lofty goal and certification. National board certification has a direct correlation to classroom instruction. Our students are the direct beneficiary, and I certainly agree with that. And I'd also like to add that advanced degree certification is also very important to our students, and has benefits in the great, and I'm disappointed that the General Assembly decided to stop paying for advanced degrees. Certainly congratulate Stephanie on her accomplishment, and thank her for what she does for our students. The second recognition is for Marcus Sayers. I'm gonna have Marcus just kind of explain the article that he co-wrote for the American Association of Physics Teachers. If you wouldn't mind just taking a few minutes to explain it.
All right, now Marcus dumb it down for someone.
I'll try.
Very good.
Okay, so what we intend to do, myself and Dr. Rave, who is, he's PhD from Wake Forest University, we set out to look at people that are introductory physics, and what happens is a lot of times we forget that you're coming out of high school, you're going into an introductory class, you may not have the knowledge of the foundation of what you're trying to solve or what you're trying to look at. A lot of times it's given to you, it's not really explained, it's just here, and what we focused on were kinematic equations. Here they are, write them down, and that is what it is, don't worry about anything else. So what we set out to do was we proposed a problem with upper-level physics students, and said, well, here's the problem. And the problem was, if we have Tarzan running through the jungle, there's a ravine that's so wide, and there's a ravine that's so deep, what amount of velocity would he have to hit a vine with to swing across? So it's the idea that, well, we have a problem here, we don't know how far the ravine is, we don't know what velocity we're gonna have to hit something with, and so they start to look at it as, well, we need stuff for this problem, we need stuff to solve this problem. We need to know how fast Tarzan's moving, we need to know what angle to let go of the vine, we need to know how far the ravine is. Well, whenever you give students that, those variables, then it comes down to where you're just, you're kind of spoon-feeding. So when you get to the point, they're not really understanding what's going on. So we took the problem and we said, here's the problem, figure it out. And of course, we had about five students that were like, oh, well, I got this, I'm all over. So then, the ones that take it serious, they come to you and they say, well, we need more about these. And then it's, well, what do you need about? And then they say, well, we need velocity, we need time, we need angles, you know, we'll figure it out, and I'm gonna give it to you. And then, so what you can do is you can essentially say, well, this is what I will do. And you break it down to the very, 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 very basics of what you're trying to solve. So we went with the range function. At origin zero, zero, you're throwing a ball, how far would that ball go at a given velocity? Well, we still need the velocity. Well, no you don't, because we set it up in a spreadsheet, look at it, and say, throw this ball at one meter per second, and then throw it at two meters per second, and then throw it at three. Find out at each velocity how far it's gonna go. And then we break it down even more, and look at the simple aspects, how far it's gonna go. What velocity did you throw it at? And then you can eventually go and get more and more complex, and then you can eventually solve the problem that you're looking at. So it's taking a big problem and making it small first, and then going to get it bigger and bigger and bigger. So I won't get into the math and everything, 'cause it gets, it gets really complex, but it's the idea of taking a problem, breaking it down into really small portions, and getting a big answer out of it. So when you do that, you understand the theory behind it. So you don't look at just going straight into a lab, and I teach science at Macon Middle School. Yeah, and I honestly, I thought that my first experience in front of the board would be about room cleanliness and. But some labs is, I don't want to take that away from it. But at the same time, it's, whenever we treat a problem like this, students come away with an idea that they know how to solve everything about this problem before you even get into the variables. I mean, I agree, and my favorite part of teaching science is labs. I love it. And in college, the reason I take research and done all that was to do labs, 'cause the labs are fun. But if you don't understand where the numbers are coming from, and you don't understand how you're getting those numbers, you don't understand. You're looking at numbers and you're saying, I'll just plug this in here. But when you understand the theory behind it, then you get a true understanding of where all the numbers go, where they're coming from, how they apply, and it gives you just a better understanding of the whole situation. And what we looked at was for those students that really looked at this, and we say, well, it's hands-on learning, and especially in experiments, it's a lot of hands-on learning. Whenever they do things like this, it's still hands-on. They're not going out and actively seeking an answer, they're doing it with pencil and paper, but it's still a theory. And when you get done with this, and at the end of the article, a lot of the students that we ask questions about, they get a real sense of achievement out of it. Not only, well, I got numbers, and that's great, but the idea that we really understand where we're getting all these numbers from.
And when he's talking about this, this goes with Common Core and goes with our middle school learning, and he does a great job of that in a classroom, of getting your kids to explore and feel good about what they're doing, and that's why I'm proud of him, because I'm telling you what, to write an article like this and do what he does in our classroom...
Goes along with what you've heard of as STEM curriculum, science, technology, engineering, and math. We're very fortunate to have teachers like Marcus that can teach a curriculum like this. Now, as a former science teacher, I wanted to explain this article, but I didn't want to steal Marcus.
Thank you, sir, I appreciate it.
We will focus back.
Marcus did an outstanding job with the article and explaining.
Circle highlights none of my presentations. With the board's permission, I'd like to do two things. Melissa Gardner's here to give us an update. All right, the board, I think she needs to travel. If we could, if there's any objection, we'll let her take her time at this point. Be a reminder.
Yes, go.
They'll wake up for, yeah, they'll get more attention when we get there, so.
We're still trying to figure.
I promise I don't have any data slides, none of the, it's hard to follow the physics teacher. I'll tell you that, it was a flashback to my, I was the one who only got the numbers in class, so I wish she were to fit in my picture. I just want to say really quickly, that's a great example of why it's such a pleasure for us to work here in this county. Teachers, we get all different content areas that we get to work with, and we've been doing this now, going on, gosh, it's the third year, the third full year, and this is the last few months for us. We're officially out of here. I know you guys can't believe it, right? We never thought the day would come, but we're on our way out as of the spring, so we're really working hard now. This week, we're looking at a lot of data, your benchmarking data, we're working on a plan and exit strategy, if you will, transitioning. Carrie has taken up that job beautifully. I mean, we don't have to do a whole lot in terms of project management, she's doing it at a district level, which we're really, really proud of that, too. So it sounds like you might be getting one more person to maybe take on some of that Carrie-like responsibility, which that's great, congratulations on that. That's an exit for us, but we're trying to make sure that we're leaving it in the best possible way that we can, the most sustainable, the most fidelity, all the things that we promised, so we're still working hard at that. We're waiting to crunch the numbers. We have some great benchmarking data trickling in, and not all students are where they're supposed to be, we were just talking about that, we've got some great gains in there, too, but all that information is diagnostic information, and that's, I think that's the point, right? It's figuring out what students need in real time and meeting their needs. So we're gonna be taking a look at that this week, meeting with principals. I'm going to the principal meeting tomorrow, so I thanks, thanks to all the principals in advance for letting me be there, but it's plenty of time. It's time to roll up our sleeves and figure out how we can sustain this for as long as you want it here, that it doesn't go away because the fidelity's not, and I don't want to say manage, that's the wrong word, it just takes a lot. All of you who've been doing this for a couple of years know this is no small task, it doesn't happen overnight, and nothing happens by accident, right? I'm looking at my very familiar faces. So we're still there, we're still here, so let us know if there's anything that you need, and we'll have some progress monitoring data to turn over to you, I think in a couple of weeks. I think tomorrow's the last day, is that right? Tomorrow's the end of the benchmarking period. So what we've got so far, so thanks again for having us, and Holly has a nice special treat for us, I'll have her take it over here.
It won't go with it. Okay. Just a real quick update, few things that we've been doing. When we come in and do these teacher recognitions, we want to just give you a few updates of all the great things that are going on in the district, and then we selected one teacher to get an award this month. And so I just wanted to mention that at East Franklin, the OCN has been implemented really well with the math Title I teacher, and she's been going into one of the kindergarten classes there, and assisting, doing some instruction, and then she has also turned that over to the teacher, and the teacher has continued that kind of instruction. And what we're seeing as we've looking at the number sense test, is that more than half of that class doubled their scores, there were some that tripled their scores, and none of the kids that she retested made, all of them made gains, none of them regressed, and so that's really exciting to see that. The, we have increased implementation on the ESL level at South Macon, and Dan Cole is just doing a wonderful job at that. He's running groups all day long with those ESL kids, and we have two in particular there that came in to the beginning of the year not speaking any English, and they're now reading. So that's really exciting to see them go from just not being able to even speak our language to actually reading the language in a matter of months.
That's a subgroup we're really interested in taking a look at data-wise, and we don't get a lot of opportunity to work with those groups in particular, so we're just excited to see what happens.
Yeah. And then also, I wanted to talk a little bit about the content-based instruction that's happening at Macon Middle School, and this will roll right into recognizing Jennifer Rogers. What's happening there is that there's about twenty-some kids that we're servicing there, and she has made it a point to make sure that she knows what's going on in the classrooms that they're being pulled out of to get literature instruction. And as she's, they're coming out of social studies and some science, and so she's asked about the curriculum and what the teachers are teaching in those classrooms, and then she's purchased books on the level that the students are reading at, which is a lower level still, but, and, but it's that content that they're possibly missing in the, in coming out of a history or a science class. And there was a really great story, Jennifer, correct me if I miss anything, but a great story of one of those students coming back to her classroom, they had read, what was your Civil War book that you read, Jennifer?
We read Behind Enemy Lines.
Behind Enemy Lines, in the classroom, and did a lot of modified BB with it, a lot of making sure that they were reading it to get that fluency going, but also making sure that the pictures were there for the information they were reading. And one of the students came back a month later, is that about right? And said, guess what we studied today in history? They'd studied the Civil War, and they already had all that background knowledge because of all the instructions that Jennifer had taken the time to do with them. And I also know that she goes into the library, and when those students are picking out library books, and directs them to the books that they were able to read, instead of them just picking out any book and not being able to understand what they're reading. And so I just wanted to recognize Jennifer, come on, for all of her hard work at Macon Middle School. She is very dedicated to those children there to make sure that they not only get the instruction of reading, but that they also are getting that foundation in their other courses as well. So thank you.
We got the good one, her husband works at the high school. That right, Jennifer?
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Thanks, I think it's our time for public comment. Deputy Wright standing near the door. Mr. Witty, would you check to see if anybody that's signed up? We have our, we have the sheet there.
I signed them, sorry.
Okay. In case those that didn't know, we have the sheet, let me explain where we're at. This is our time that the board sets aside each meeting for public comment, where basically we have anyone here that would like to address the board, if you would, now is your time, just simply give up and give us your name, we're here to listen and listen, I don't know if we put it, so is there anyone here that would like to talk, speak for it at this time? Okay, very good. Moving on, so we get into our agenda. First on there is the consent agenda, I think all the board has had time to review that. Were there any questions in connection with the agenda? Or information updates?
We'll make that together for them.
I have a motion to accept, in a second. Any other discussion? Not, if none, I'll take a motion to approve. All in favor, signal by saying aye. Anyone opposed? Flag sign. Yeah, it's gonna be a long one.
I'm not gonna record long.
It's a Monday. Personnel, Mr. Moore, any updates since the time this was posted that you need to give to the board to break our attention?
No, sir, not at this time.
Okay. Policies, approval items, first on there is East Franklin PTO fundraiser, Ms. Parks.
Okay, on February 13th, we're gonna have our father-daughter dance, and we did that last year, and it was really good, very successful. So we're gonna have the parents' vs. faculty basketball game. I'm not gonna play, but. And then April 4th, we're gonna have a spring clean, and May 9th will be muffins tomorrow. Any questions?
David, it's like, you've had these every year.
Yeah.
I make a motion to, I make a motion to accept these fundraisers.
I have a motion to accept East Franklin fundraisers, in a second. All in favor, signal by saying aye. Any opposed? So move Franklin High School fundraisers. Mr. Witty.
First one for our dance team, we're gonna be doing a dance clinic on Saturday, March 8th, for fifth and sixth grade students, that's its arrangement for the warm-up for the next season's dance uniforms. Then we go to...
What grade did you say?
It's the Saturday, March 8th, fifth and sixth grade students. It's gonna be a high school, which they'll have some scholarships available, and they'll get a T-shirt, and they'll be wagering registration forms also. JB Morris Football Team, cheerleading dance, Coach Brooks, this is the Panther cards, they'll be selling again next year, so it'll start probably around August 5th, 2014, so that's gonna be our Panther. Then we go to the drama department, this is Denver, hope they can put on career plays. All of them's gonna have a night, a performance, the performance's gonna be, he's gonna be taught, reaching out to some elementary schools, may have some elementary school students come over, pay a dollar per student for the James and the Giant Peach, which one of their sports, they're gonna do Grease, and they're gonna do the Angry Jurors as part of their productions.
Any questions of, Mr. Witty?
I have a motion to approve, Mr. Witty.
Second. I have a motion to second, approve all of their requests. All in favor, signal by saying aye. Any opposed? So moved. Mr. Mazlin, Middle School.
I think first one is our girls and boys, our girl soccer and girl softball, they're gonna be selling copies, it's something new, but pay fifteen hundred dollars, oh no, that's not one, thank goodness. If we sell two hundred bags of this, we're gonna get fifty percent of it to sell, we'll be able to sell, this fundraiser's gonna go help support our athletics, plus soccer uniforms for the girls soccer team. It's quite lengthy when you look at all that, but coffee's a new thing, and I think it'll sell pretty well.
Scott and I tried to pick on you, but there wasn't a whole lot of information on it, so I'm assuming all the members will be, they'll have a certain number of tickets that are being asked to sell?
Yeah, they're gonna sell, yeah, no, that's fine. They're going to sell, pulling door-to-door, that's one thing we do, and one of you, but most of them, that's the main thing, but they're gonna probably sell, every, there's not a certain amount everybody has to sell, you'd like them to sell them, but I don't believe in sell twenty or give two hundred dollars. I think it's something that we just do the best we can, and we'll cover what we can.
Okay, good.
Next one is, we have this every year, it's our talent show, and we came up with a good idea and raised a lot of money last year, but in this talent show, four dollars for adults, two dollars for students to get in, and you use your ticket as a vote, so you can vote for the winner. Well, what they make some money is if you wanna buy extra votes, you can buy them up to, you know, twenty dollars worth of extra tickets to vote. So you can load your votes down for your favorite person, but it's gonna cost you the American way.
Counselor, that's my vote, right?
Yeah, that's what I said, it's the American way, so we're okay on that one.
These votes, we're okay with.
And the next one's something new we're gonna do, they're, they wanna come up with these band cards, the local businesses are only ten dollars, most of them are going for twenty, and as you can see, each student provided ten cards to sell, profit from each card sold will be seven dollars, which is very good, and I'll give you fifty percent quota, but I think we're doing similar things with other events, and I mean, other sports and athletics teams in the county, but this will be a band card with other businesses on it. And this is, if you go, this is the one that's, let's put fifteen hundred dollars up front on. So basically, what we do is we buy the cards for three bucks apiece, and we, we have all that profit afterwards, so, but between the band and our school, we'll come up with that fifteen hundred dollars to confront them, the money board, so no one's out besides, nobody has the option, we'll get it.
We're gonna start this in March, which Mazlin's, I reckon it will not be completed with the other, the high school. Good.
I make a motion to accept fundraisers as presented.
Second. I have a motion to second, accept middle school fundraisers. Any other questions? If not, all in favor, signal by saying aye. Any opposed? So moved. Thank you, Mr. Mazlin. Paula, nothing to do with immediate budgeting?
Ms. Love's gonna talk to you about that.
Um, Ms. Love from Macon, our Mountain View intermediate school, sorry. We'll have it. Take her back to me. I teach social studies and science at Mountain View, and I'm interested in doing a budgeting project. I also teach the fifth grade social studies, and part of the essential standards is learning about budgeting and finance. I'm trying to tie it into math, which is in fifth grade, they're also learning about decimals. And what I'm asking is permission to use two hundred dollars from a field trip fund that we have set up for our program, taking two hundred dollars out of that fund, giving students a budget of twenty dollars for each group. They have to plan a fundraiser that would be based around St. Patrick's Day, have to plan, advertise, they have to pay for their advertisement, a percentage of labor costs, they have to actually pay the bank back on the bank, they have to pay the bank back with interest, but they would use that real money to make it a real life project. The things I'm kind of thinking of them selling are like Tootsie Pops in the gym in the morning, selling Sham Rocks, that kind of thing. It has to be a St. Patrick's Day-themed fundraiser, and any money that they make after they have paid back their initial loan, which is twenty dollars, any money that they make, they don't get to keep, it would go to our Mountain View Intermediate School PTO, so we would end up turning it into a donation to the school. But I'm just wondering if it's okay if I use that, that money from our fund to, to give them these loans?
I have a question. Well, how did the money come into?
So, we're part of the Connections Program, and we do all of our field trip permission slips and money at the beginning of the year, and so that is our field trip fund.
So it came from the parents?
It came from the parents, and so the, the money would just be seeded out of that. If that is, if we don't want to do that, I'm fine with putting two hundred dollars of my money up to do that, 'cause I know I'm gonna be getting it back.
Okay, so is this, is this fund gonna get back in the long run?
Oh, yeah, yeah, totally, yeah. That, yeah, oh, yeah, the two hundred dollars is just coming out to purchase the materials, and then once they have made their money back, they have to pay the bank.
No, I think it's absolutely awesome that you're actually trying to give a real life experience here, but I was just questioning, what, the twenty-two hundred dollars going back, because sometimes parents give money for a certain thing, and then one of the lies happen. So you answered that question, and I think it's great, so I would make a motion to accept your request.
Second, any other questions? Ms. Love?
Thank you for doing that. I would like to say that the banker in me really appreciates that. Children need to learn how it, how it works. Bless me.
I have a motion to second, all in favor, signal by saying aye. Any opposed? So moved.
Thank you.
Good luck, and thank you. Speech, language, pathology, pathologist, contract, Paula?
Yes, I'm asking to amend this contract with Martha Wyatt, to add four more hours a week, she's gonna help cover maternity leave for a speech therapist at East Franklin.
Make a motion to accept.
Any other question? Being all in favor, signal by saying aye. Any opposed? So moved.
The second one is transportation contract for a parent to transport a student who is, can't ride a bus.
Okay, this is an ongoing thing, right?
Yeah.
I make a motion to accept this contract for, this child who can't ride a bus.
Second. I have a motion to second, all in favor, signal by saying aye. Any opposed? So moved.
Thank you.
Board policy, number 422, concussion and head injury, this will be our first reading. Mr. Hitting.
Mr. Chairman, the board, I think very wisely recently got back onto this subscription service for policy updating with the School Board Association. We are going to be playing quite a bit of catch-up on that, and this, you're having your first sip from the fire hose tonight. We, we're gonna try to keep that at a minimum, but there's, there are gonna be quite a few policies most every month for, for quite some time. This first one is a School Board Association policy that will get us into compliance with the requirements of the Gefler Waller Concussion Awareness Act of 2011. I don't know why they couldn't find a neurologist named Smith to name an after, but anyway, it is what it is. You are required by state law at this point to have a policy to deal with concussions, and that's what this policy outlines. The only thing different from when this was presented to you last month is that I did make a minor change in the wording in page one, paragraph B, now agreed slightly differently to make clear, we're talking about students have to sign on before participating, and no one can coach or otherwise take part, if you're an adult or whoever else, to participate in that way without having signed on that you know about this policy. I think it's fairly straightforward, I'm happy to answer your questions you have, but otherwise it just needs approval as a first. I'm happy to answer your questions you have, but, uh, otherwise it just needs approval as a first reading.
Has the athletic association adopted this policy?
Was they added it to, you know, there's a longer list of about sixty items that are, are school board house, powers and duties. And one of those is now to have a concussion awareness policy. So I, I'm sure that there is some athletic association regulation about them, but the way that the General Assembly handled it was to require each school district to, to adopt the policy.
Are we gonna come off or put in, I've been reading for certain age kids, we're gonna pass stuff, same for all of them? Lakes are doing it, huh?
Could be. I know that they are finding out more and more about how long ramifications of a concussion can go when it's a lot longer than anybody thought.
So you want me to ask just to make this a first reading and approve this next meeting?
Please, I don't, I don't know that we have to have it adopted tonight, but. Well, it's up to the board if you have a unanimous vote, I would, uh, that would be fine with me as well. Just make, uh, make the vote to suspend the, the second reading and approve the.
Okay, I'm okay to do that because I don't see it being an issue. Um, I make a motion to suspend the second reading and to approve this policy change as, um, read by the history.
Second. A motion to second. Any other questions? This is Mark Schwartz, December's now sipping from fire hose, so. All in favor, say my say an aye. Any opposed, so moved. Next is, uh, policy four two-three, use of board-owned vehicles, motorized equipment. This is also a first reading.
Mr. Chairman, this one, uh, you might also, if the board is, is willing, go ahead and sus- I was gonna suggest you suspend the second reading for this and go ahead and adopt. Uh, I take it you had discussion at your December meeting, which I was not present for.
You know, we had the other, had the attorney with us.
Yeah.
He said it was the good.
You had the senior partner that brings the operation. This policy as drafted is basically the same, not basically, it's almost verbatim the same policy that, that Duncan County adopted in reaction to the tragedy they had, uh, there. And so it, it is a ban on student, uh, operation of, of district-owned vehicles. Except where there is an identified curricular need for it. And I think we all read that meaning basically just student edu-, uh, student driver, uh, education. But that's, otherwise they have to.
Long in coming because, I mean, we've all been to school and seen those four-wheeler, whatever, quick around.
With the boards, can I ask you one question, sir? This hit me, I was reading this. Are we covered if we have a contractor that comes onto our property and has a contract employee that be under, that would not be meets these guidelines and they were operating, let's say, a gate or something like that and they had an accident? Are we covered under that scenario?
Are we covered by insurance?
Insurance liability, the whole, everything?
I think we would be covered by sort of a general liability policy. I mean, it might be better to have stated policy that, I don't know, you didn't, if, if I follow you, you're thinking whether or not this goes far enough.
Correct.
And also it's not to say that, you know, I think we'd have to be fairly specific with that. I think this is drafted in this way, in the way is to avoid any confusion that we're telling students not to operate their own vehicles on school property. I mean, yes, sir, there might be operation of third-party owned vehicles that we don't have a policy banning. But that already is the case 'cause every student who drives onto the campus at Frankton High School is operating a vehicle on our, on our property. But we've, we've given instruction, not, it won't be our vehicle.
Correct.
It's, certainly we could put that in policy if the board wants to, that, that is against our policy, that any, see, it gets tricky to be.
It's tricky, I understand, but that's the one thing that hit me. I was thinking, this is great and I'm glad we're doing it. I understand maybe it's a little inconvenient for some people, I don't think it's necessary. But I'm bringing with that direction on the same type of equipment being used for like mowing contracts or those type of things. I'm just wondering, should we take that next step and I'll leave that at your discretion?
I would, I'll certainly be happy to explore and bring this in suggested language. I would, uh, I think the way to do that would be, and again, if it's the will of board, go ahead and get this in place.
Place and then do the.
I'll bring an amendment to this policy if you, if you pass it.
Do y'all think I'm being too, too conservative? But I gotta think about that. This is great, but I think we all students, oh, that just can take.
I think that, I think what you were suggesting though is covering, students are prohibited from driving board-owned vehicles unless the student's operation vehicle, equipment is identified with the school's trademark. Really, with this policy, students will not allow to drive any board-owned vehicle other than drugs and consequences.
Right.
Under any circumstances?
I'm worried about not, not necessarily being a board-owned, uh, M V, uh, vehicle, Chris. Doc Baldwin, don't think about it. I wanna make sure we are not exposure ourselves if we had that scenario, we'd be exposed, shall we say.
And there definitely would be exposure there. I mean, there, chances are if somebody wrecks a third-party owned mower on, you know, and a student is injured on a school property, you, you're gonna get some, you know, there's just not much way around that, but.
We'd have to have something saying that we, that we didn't have done that.
Yes, and I'll, we'll be looking at that and bring you back.
Very good. All right, meantime, I think that is our counselor recommending, that he recommends we, uh, skip through the second reading and adopt this. Do I hear a motion to that effect?
So moved.
A motion that we move this forward and abandon the first, not the first reading, but adapt. This is a second reading and adapt this policy to your second. A motion to second. All in favor, say my say an aye. Any opposed, so moved. Thank you, John, for doing this for us. A little bit better with it being in place, shall we say. Policy two oh five, board of education meetings and procedures.
Mr. Chairman, the only change, uh, suggested change to this policy is on page three. And it depends specifically to the, uh, how active a role the chairman, uh, takes in these meetings. I think I had discussed with you some that, uh, there is a fairly stark difference in, in state law as to the direction to board members and board chairs on whether or not to vote or how to take, how active a, a role they can take. For cities in North Carolina, it's very clear that an independently elected mayor presides over the meetings, but has no vote unless there is a tie. In counties, the chair of the, the board of county commissioners is an elected member on par with everybody else on the board. And it's specific in the statute that that person does vote in all, and must vote in all cases. We don't have an equivalent of that for school boards. There is nothing that tells us specifically that the board chair only votes in the case of a tie. I think that our old policy from back before this current one was adopted said explicitly, in, in, let me finish. In the absence of, uh, any clear direction in the law, in state law, it's, it falls to your policy to decide how you're gonna handle that, that voting responsibility. Uh, I think our old policy said explicitly that the board chair would only vote in case of a tie. Our policy adopted in two thousand and six added, and I think rightfully so, that the board chair may vote on any action and shall vote at great all times. In thinking about that, discussing that somewhat with, with you and that board role, I don't know why you should not add that the board chair could second a motion. It does not make a whole lot of sense that the board chair gets a vote but can't say, hey, let's vote on this thing and all the other members of that board get to do. So this is my suggested, uh, change for that. I think it's pretty straightforward and I'm happy to answer the questions you have.
I would add to John, I know one of the things, I went to a meeting where they, for board chairs, and I think this is what John is suggesting gives the way most boards now of, uh, education are operating. So it's, it's kinda following line with what, um, most counties are doing. As, um, I'll state my opinion, I personally think I would welcome that change and, and, uh, would vote if necessary to, to approve. I'll leave it open for other, other, other members.
Would you like to go ahead and tell that, cause?
I mean, it's up to the board if you, if you, I don't foresee any changes. And if I don't hear any from you, you might as well suspend the second reading and, and pass it.
I make a motion to accept as you have presented and to suspend second, um, reading and make it happen and the general wants it. I'll say.
Good. I have a motion to second. Any other questions?
I don't make a change, I'll agree.
Please, good. It just makes me feel better, but I'm not, I'll be on record every time. I personally think that's what we should do. Okay, exactly. I didn't think y'all would object to that either, so there we go. Any other questions, discussions? If not, I hear a motion, um, for approval, to, say an aye. Any opposed, so moved.
Thank you, board.
If it's something that's, that's what I'm, sir. Delete the board policy seven ninety arrangements of substitutes.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, last year, perhaps, we, um, passed a policy for substitute teachers. And to be honest with you, I forgot to delete this. So we have redundant policy. This is from two thousand and six, so this one just needs to be eliminated. The other policy is seven ninety-one, it's in the policy manual, and it is current.
So this is one that's extremely interesting, just not there, but we need to take formal action.
That's been sitting there and, and to be honest with you, I just forgot to make sure that it's deleted.
It needs to be done like that with, let's go ahead and adopt it tonight.
Well, no, this one is, this is gonna be deleted because seven ninety-one is the one that we voted on, just clinging to that. I'm trying to think, a couple of years ago, and I forgot to remove this one. We actually have two substitute teachers on.
Which we don't need.
I would, I would ask you to make the motion and also just suspend the rule.
Policy seven ninety.
And I think as John was saying, there, does there, we don't, this, this is not a first reading or anything like that.
What your, what your policy says is that no, your policies are not to be amended, uh, which I think also deleting is probably an amendment. So, you know, it's a pretty drastic amendment. But also I would ask you to treat it as though you're gonna skip.
Any other reading?
Skip the first, yeah, skip the second reading and, and adopt. Mr. Would you amend your motion there for me?
I make a motion that we delete this policy and, and the second reading as well.
Have a motion to delete board policy seven ninety and also deleting the need for a second reading. Do I hear a second? Have a motion to second. All in favor, say my say an aye. Any opposed, so moved. Placement board policy four sixty, relationship with law enforcement.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Dr. Baldwin and Mr. Henny and I talked about this. Perhaps these two policies actually need to be melded together due to the fact that the last update, um, well, it was in two thousand and six as well, but there are some, some things in there probably that we would like to keep. Any policy, of course, that I am recommending to you over these next couple of board meetings, Mr. Henny referred to the sipping from the fire hose, are from the North Carolina School Boards Association. However, uh, this is making count. We are able to meld these policies and create them as we so choose. This is merely a suggestion. What we had in the past was, was a good policy. Perhaps we just need to put two together. So this is first reading of the policy that is brought forth by the School Boards Association. Policy after that is the current policy. And with your permission, what I would like to do is again, put these two together, so to speak.
Mr. Chairman, have a question?
Yes.
To go back, Mr. Brown, to the third, uh, paragraph. It says, uh, school may source officer will get signed due to special, I mean, written understanding between law enforcement and agents. So could we have that?
We probably do somewhere, but I think it should be in the document to that policy. But that needs to be clarified, what their roles are, I would assume. Well, and, and like the one that I drafted and presented to you for, for the Highlands SRO some time back, it would be an interlocal agreement between this, this board and whatever the law enforcement agency's governing board is. Angie is gonna tell you about something that's gonna require us to look into a new one anyway. We probably need a new and updated one, uh, just in general. And so there've been some financial developments that are gonna require us to, to do a new one anyway. So, uh, I'll, I'll have a new draft for you of, of, of those soon.
So this doesn't need to be one of those that we adopted?
No, sir. I, I think what we need to do actually is, uh, if I can receive any feedback from y'all as to things that are like even and old, or delete in the new, or vice versa. We'd be happy to take that into consideration as we create the new policy.
We can give that to you sometime over the next couple of weeks.
Absolutely.
Great, thank you.
Actually, I'm being a little picky. Is this really even a first reading, Mr. Moore?
No, sir, not really. I guess it's more informational, but the first is the legal.
To allow you to explore the opportunity to combine the two. We don't have anything, you're gonna look at amending the current policy based on what you have here. But we, this is not formally being submitted to us as the new policy. Am I understanding correctly?
That is correct. Correct. And it's a, you know, it's a formal step to make sure that, that this board gets a couple of ideas. Or anything is filed with pass. It's, so we, no, you do not have a pol-, a current policy that was being recommended as such. I guess under that circumstance, since we're not, you know, we, we don't have any great rush to get this adopted tonight. We will just bring it back.
Bring it back. Guess we're gonna give you our blessing to proceed, board, if you think else.
Exactly.
Have more blessing?
Has anyone looked at it? Might want to give Mr. Four something now after reviewing it on the, Dr. Quine.
I thought I would look at some more.
I'll check it out. That was a good corner.
I'll look at, just the written understanding, uh, was my concern here, but they say we have one. And I see Mr. Riley here. I don't know if he realizes that we have a written understanding, understanding or not. But it gets to be sticky 'cause you got school policies, school rules versus law.
And I'm sorry. Primarily what that interlocal needs to do is it's a, it irons out our understandings about who's gonna pay for it primarily 'cause where, where the funds come from is important. But it also does get into whether there, who, who has what responsibilities. It tries to make clear that, you know, they're, they are an independent sworn officer and not our, you know, not, not the school investigator who we, you know, principal directs to go investigate things. So we, you know, and there's some laws that have changed in the past couple of years about our responsibility to report the law enforcement. As you well know, a couple of years ago, that got all bent out of shape down the east in a couple of districts. Principals were being handcuffed and all this stuff, um, because they weren't reporting. So we do need to examine it, I agree. We need to make sure that that understanding is understood, upside. Back with the, uh, about the appearance of being redundant, but yes.
Any other comments, what anyone wants to make, Mr. Moore, as he starts putting it together in policy? If not, good deal. We'll move on then. Thank you, Mr. Moore. New board policy three fifty-five, school safety.
Yes, sir. This is also a recommendation from the, uh, School Boards Association. Again, there's some specific, uh, specific things that are spelled out due to statutes that during the last legislative session, we are now required, and perhaps I might be thinking of the next policy. Well, this pretty much talks about some standards that we have as far as threats, suspicious behavior, planning for emergencies, um, safety equipment training, school rules. We don't really have a school safety policy in place. There's no law that says we have to have a school safety policy in place. Again, this is a recommendation of the North Carolina School Boards Association. We can fix it how we want to fix it for our needs.
And this is just what they recommended, again, it's not the form of these kind of policies, but it kind of fits the same thing you talked about.
We got a zip file of about, oh, thirty-five to forty things.
I understand.
And everybody sort of took their fair share and, uh.
Here we are.
Here we are, sipping from the fire hose.
Any questions of Mr. Moore? Has he, I'm saying the same thing, we're gonna give you our blessing to proceed or not. So I guess that's what basically we're at, so.
Chairman, I have a couple of questions. I was going through it, I had the opportunity to, Dr. Baldwin gave me this information. Chairman, I have a couple of questions, I was going through it, I had the opportunity to, Dr. Baldwin gave me this information, I had the opportunity to go through it. The first paragraph says, students, all you may need to have. I see up there at the top, it said, students must be reasonably supervised. And down in the second paragraph, I see that students, sex offenders in our receiving education, so it's our own school, probably must be. I just wondered if the word reasonably supervised could be put in there. No, okay, that's what I understood.
It's, and we kind of wrestled with this a year ago, November or something like that. It's, in the event that you have a student who is a registered sex offender, you do have to monitor, and it's stated in the statutes that way, must be supervised at all times, which, I'm, I'm with you, I would never write that because it's impossible. It's practically, very difficult to do. We also don't have any registered student sex offenders, at least last time.
We don't have any that are registered.
Registered in the district or registered.
That's all I'm going to say about that.
It does, it does place a very high burden on these students.
Score.
As a student like that, and almost, it's almost poking the ribs to say, think about expulsion. I think that if we have to deal with a registered sex offender student, we'll probably talk about it, about, about looking at.
Guaranteed.
I just didn't know if that worked reasonable, could be true. Another question, under suspension process to address potential safety concerns and emergencies?
Yes, sir.
What, what about board of education members?
Under.
All students, sisters, boys, have a need to be alert at all times, a situation, blah, blah, blah.
Are they, what board of education members, although you're elected, you are?
Well, that's what I see.
Are you considered in the form?
No, they're not.
Okay.
Because it could easily get in a situation of being a gym or somewhere like that, some move, something move on, and you're standing there, and just act like you're in a. Or you're setting yourself up for a lawsuit.
Your most, I just turned locally, I'm not going to, I'm not going to speak to that.
While, I think that this is supposed to be the board's policy handed down for your employees to follow. I hope each of you know that if you're standing on the bleachers and you feel like they're about to get away, you're going to get painted in the lawsuit if it happens, actually, if you don't let somebody know, so, you know.
That's what they're going to have or not, huh?
Yeah.
That's a sticky one, because we have board members who go to hall meetings, so you could easily get caught in a situation. I just didn't know if that needs to be thought about a bit more, what our role is, and I had the same question to you, are we employees? I don't think you'd be a employee, you'd be an elected person, and so we figured, I have to go to the council.
We'll take a look at that.
Okay. That was the other question I had. The next page, under five. I say right there, now, the su, in that paragraph there, it's got about the student that provide local law enforcement emergency management agencies. Those schematic diagrams of school facilities?
Yes, sir, that's, that's a new general statute.
Have we done that? At one time we did.
In the process of that, because what I'm trying to procure now, what I'm trying to procure is, if you walk down the hall and look in Terry Bell, Ms. Norton's old office, you'll see blue plans, blue, blue prints everywhere. We thought about trying to figure out some way to use those effectively, but what I'm going to do, and I've talked to Robbie Holland about this one, because obviously he, he's part of his plan, is to get some type of schematic drawing. David Curtis seems to think that many of them probably are on file electronically. If that's true, perhaps they will give it to us just as a way to continue soliciting, us soliciting business from them. And also, we would have access to those, and the law enforcement division would have access to them as well. That's a general statute requirement this year. They also have to have keys to the facility. Primarily, it's to show where are the windows, where are the doors, where are the doors in the middle of the hallway, and things of that nature. So, we've got to follow this, and I've talked to Mr. Holland about that, and we're in process.
So we wouldn't, we wouldn't want to prove.
No, sir. No, sir. We need to, we need to make sure, and I've talked with Dr. Baldwin about it. We need to make sure, of course, that we have that information for Mr. Holland and the keys. We sort of bounced around the ideas, who's going to hold the keys and for where, and, you know, getting pretty complicated. Honestly, the sheriff's department would need a key for every building, but Highland Police Department is going to need a key for their central facility, and a copy of those same records. There's some of our buildings.
Question. On that, number one, under establishing process to address potential safety concerns and emergencies. If, let's say, this is at school events, let's say at a ballgame, and you have small children playing in areas of the gym, even though their parents are there, they're not being supervised, and they're playing in areas of the gym. I mean, is that going to be, would that be, let's just say when a ball's a cracks their head or, or something, is that something that could potentially be a lawsuit?
Sure, it could.
Sure, it can.
I just know it, I just know it, and I hate it, and just like, I was there on a Saturday at the small children's ballgames, and I, I actually went in, they had the curtains pulled on, you know how the Danahela gym is, and had the curtains pulled. Well, there was several children up there, playing and running and everything, and, you know, I seen one of my grandchildren going up there, and I went and got them. But there was several children up there, and I was just reading this, saying, you know, that employees have a duty to be alerted at all times to situations that may pose a threat. And I was just wondering what kind of liability would be if, if a child got hurt in that kind of situation, even though their parents are there.
And that's not a school thing.
That's not.
We have a memorandum, we have a memorandum of understanding with local boards of recreation, so it falls under general liability, I would think.
Well, this happens at, yeah, it happens at the varsity games as well, but the parents.
Did you go up there as an employer or as a grandparent?
I went up there as a grandparent. I lost mine, you brought mine. I didn't bring anybody's but mine out that time. Although I think I did scare the rest of them.
Well, we'll just write you into the policy.
Give those kids what for. I don't think writing this into the policy doesn't change what legal standard for will be the duty of an employee to supervise students, or chil, or children. What that duty is, is to provide reasonable supervision at all times, given the, given all the facts. So for instance, you know, that, that responsibility to a normally able student who is, you know, sitting at a desk is less than, say, a special needs student who is climbing on a jungle gym. He, he gets higher. I think that that responsibility, in the circumstance you described, where those children are not supervised in part because of the negligence of their parent, of whom they're with, you probably got a much lower standard, and that's, that might even be, that might even be a complete defense at the end of the day to say, well, there was negligence, but it, there was way more on this parent than there was on, on us. So, I don't think having in the policy is going to cause us any problems that wouldn't just already be there. I mean, but whether you have this policy or not, kid falls and it's on school property, they're going to try to sue and say, somebody should have been.
What about posting, like, you know, posting signs in those areas, like, you know, during sporting events, to say on that area?
Or parents' birthday, or children's birthday. Kid, the role that you're over.
I will tell you this, if we adopt, there's language in this policy that says principals need to evaluate their properties and figure out. We, you, you will be addressing that kind of situation to say, principals, evaluate your school properties and figure out where there are safety issues.
Any other question?
Is a, is a, go back to that policy, school system employees. We use that word again, reasonable, have a reasonable duty to be a worker. Instead of have the duty, say somebody has the duty, you just let somebody laugh.
Well, we could call it reasonably alert.
I like, here's, here's.
She wants to nod off, she can nod off.
I gotta watch my grandkids.
Have a reasonable duty.
Yes.
Well, I mean. It's something obviously.
You should be able to go to a ballgame and watch it, enjoy the game. But it's like. Duty to be responsible for what's.
I guess what I'm saying is, from this policy, I, the thing that I gain from this is, you don't have the right as an employee to turn a blind eye to behavior.
As an employee.
And, and what I mean by that is potentially harmful, threatening, illegal behavior. Kids are going to be kids. But you don't have a, a right to turn a blind eye to a kid breaking a school rule, just because you're at a basketball game or a football game. I guess is where I'm coming from here.
School employee, that's what I was wanting to know, and I think, I saw you ask, Mr. Henney, the question, and he was already shaking his head. About he was an employee. A board of education member, this employee.
Gary, stop watching the game and stop the kids.
Or retake or something like that, if we say something, that maybe somebody able to look into and see if we're.
Yeah, we'll look at that.
Again, I think you're asking for our blessing to proceed, nothing that's insensitive or do so, is that right?
Slowly but surely, we want to move through these, because there are so many.
Oh, yeah. Thanks, Ken.
The arc of the policy manual is long, but it bends toward compliance.
What a nice statement.
Placement of board policy 345, drug free workplace, Mr. Moore.
We do actually have policy in place, 345, that deals with this specific issue. There are new regulations that are posted from time to time, and I'll let the barrister tell you what 21CFR 1300.01 through 1300.04 is. But basically, again, this is just perhaps a tidying up of our old policies. If you'll scroll down a little bit, thank you. Again, you've got a duty to report. There are some things that we need to look at here, I think very carefully, just go up just a little bit. This is where we need to take a look at some of the language. An employee must notify his or her supervisor in writing of any conviction under any criminal drug statute, or violation and so forth and so forth. It's talking about conviction, we need to understand what the difference between a conviction and an arrest is, there's, there's a separation there, obviously. We also have, I want to go up to the next paragraph there. This is something that we've never really broached, I think, to a degree. We're talking about reasonable suspicion to search employees. We need to be careful here, and we need to examine this. I think there is, obviously, our responsibility to do this, but I'd like to go very, very carefully through this and make sure that you are aware of the wording in this. When it talks about having an employee be required to submit to a drug or alcohol test when there's reasonable suspicion. That's something we need to look at, very, very carefully.
But I will tell you, the town of Franklin, not too often long ago, adopted it when the employee policy manual had none, along this time. And we, the town adopted a drug and alcohol policy very much along these lines, I hadn't researched it quite a bit. This, this falls right in the line with my understanding of what's allowed in terms of searches in this context.
And it talks about what reasonable suspicion, excuse me, I'm totally dialectic. Reasonable suspicion. I can't help it. The only thing there, John, I think that I'd like for us to figure out is that next sentence, the observation must be made by trained supervisor. What is a trained supervisor in determining contemporaneous observations concerning the physical, behavioral, speech, and/or performance indicators of drug or alcohol use?
So, there is training available, believe it or not, just me. We, what we mostly have, have advised in terms of staying on the right side of not violating their rights.
That's what I'm reading.
Is, like the town supervisors, you need to be sure, you know, you're going to know. When they fall down drunk, that's, you're going to have a reasonable suspicion right there. You know, when they, when they come back to work from lunch and they have the little frilly paper umbrella behind one ear, that's probably reasonable.
They are, if the supervisor is able to make different observations that seem to indicate that they're on drugs or alcohol, they're probably not performing their job duties the way that we would expect them to.
Yeah.
So we could, we'll look at that.
There's just a little, there's some things there that worry me a little bit, as to how we can, what's, what is training? So, anyway, I just wanted to make y'all aware of that as well.
We got that here, always takes it, all of a sudden, approving all these drugs, marijuana, legal laws, what are we on then?
What are we on? They're in the state of North Carolina now, that's all I tell them, they're not, you know, we're, Dorothy wasn't in Kansas anymore. You're not in Colorado anymore.
Chairman, I have a question.
Yes, Mr. Moore.
Y'all gave me this a hint read, so appreciate that. If you flip up to B, let's see, if you go back right there. I'm trying to, I have a hard understanding, trying to understand why we got the last sentence in here. The first sentence starts off with this policy, then it ends down there with the word performance period. What does the rest of that have to do with us?
You know, it, well, well, let's say we, um.
Read that, or you can sit there better than I can. This policy does not apply to the board, I don't think we're going to have anybody attending something where we require a drink.
I don't think you require a drink.
Why is that in there?
I think because that gets around the wiggle room. We just had the, you know, the North Carolina High School Athletic Association, that 100-year reception. That, obviously, it's not in, you know, I'm just taking something out of the air. Where they had all these athletes and all these coaches, and yes, alcohol served. Were you there as a coach, under your official duty? Yeah, it was outside the regular workday. Were you authorized to attend? Did you drink a beer? Can you be fired for that? Basically, that's what that's saying.
I'll, I'll try to find it and share it with the board, but I'm pretty certain that that's based on case law. Who was a, a school employee somewhere, and if I remember right, I think this is right. She, part of what she did as this reception was going on was ride down the center rail of two escalators that were together and, and had a big time. And they tried to fire her for it, and she won. Congratulations.
How was the call?
I just got a visual, a picture of that.
It was in her official capacity. A few cases, but I'll send you, I guarantee you a good read. Let me, let me see if I can.
That's what was referred to, and if you were in your official capacity, you couldn't be.
Couldn't be fired.
Separated from employment because you had a glass of wine, you were drinking a beer, if you had a reception that you were required to enter. I guess those occur. I don't know of any in public education. They're very few and far between.
Not many corks being popped in public.
Angie, what's the budget code for, for the? Angie, what's the budget code for the?
I'll take your hand.
Can you answer my question? I had another question on trained supervisor, I didn't know what that was.
I don't, I don't know either, she is, I think we need to look at that.
John said you could get trained, can you?
And then we'll, we'll look at it.
If you look, the last question, have other consequences? We went through this one time when we worked with student drug and alcohol. See that word down there in the, in the, it says requirement, determination of what the school system or the requirement that the employee participates in. Now, I believe Mr. Hannity's always forewarned me, when you require somebody, you pick up the tab.
I'm not sure about an employee, I wouldn't think so.
But now, you think so, with a student, if you say that in that framework, we would have.
I know, I know in our athletic policy, as far as violations of the drug policy, they're required to go do that, we don't like that.
Right, but I think we stayed away from that word requirement, and when I saw this year pertaining to our employees, I thought.
Angie's here telling me she thinks that the state health insurance coverage covers that sort of area.
We wouldn't have scale local monies or anything like that.
Not listed as a, I mean, there would be a, that's a problem.
That's, that's a good line of questions. I'll look into it, but my, but my, my gut reaction is to say, if an employee gets, violates this policy, and you tell them, it's either drug or you have, or you're going to the house, and they say, well, I can't pay for it, then you should say, go to the house. You could, you could also use that as grounds for dismissal, and not have, I don't know of any obligation paid, but we'll look into that.
That's it, thank you very much. Now, last one, final question, you touched on training.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Moore, thank you for my concern. My question, counselor, is nothing in this policy can be construed or extended whereby we are infringing on the rights of our employees in their privacy to, I want to put this, as you put it, have a beer or something like that, the days of Facebook where I've seen pictures of educators posted and this and that, we are not, this will not infringe on any employee's privacy and personal rights in any shape, fashion, or form.
I think this is drafted to stay on the correct side of the law as it stands with this sort of.
And the word is gonna say workplace, and it's, you think that's specified enough in terms of language we got?
Yes, sir, I, I would tell you that it's not impossible that somebody's behavior with drugs or alcohol could affect their, you know, their employment, even if they never bring it on campus, even if it's.
Correct.
You know, but it's pretty rare, I mean, it just, you know, there are cases of school systems trying to dismiss a teacher for, I think the, the ground is something like chronic abuse of drugs or alcohol, and it was on the basis of the DUI that was, you know, that she got off, off school property and off school time, and they lost, and the court said that that, you had to really show how that behavior affected their on, so, could off the job, on their own time behavior with drugs and alcohol result in dismissal?
Correct.
Yes, but we would have to really show, you know, there, it is impacting their, their on, on time performance.
A lot of changes that need to be made, John, I'm not really in favor of it, classifying this as a first reading, to be honest with you, I think it needs some work, it needs to be brought back, and at that time, get it pulled out first, is you one, am I overstepping what I'm saying, or?
We, we would love your feedback, I mean, that's what we covet, your feedback, and we'll share these with principals tomorrow, I'd love for them to share it with their faculty to get feedback on that.
Good. Let's pursue it, I think you ever blessed on that, we're not gonna classify this as a first reading, it's just another one of those blessings to proceed and then come back to us.
Okay, thanks, sir.
Thank you. Um, have I missed anything? Was that all the policies? I believe that we have.
Oh, wait.
Use risk behavior survey. Yes, Don.
Thank you. The Healthy Carolinians through Macon County Public Health Department has some funds to pay again for the youth risk behavior surveillance survey to be conducted at the schools, and we had some previous conversations, and we wanted opportunity to review, so we're glad to ask you if you would like us to do that.
How long has this been going on, I think it counted, I love the goodness survey.
Since at least 2002 through Healthy Carolinians, I think the survey was probably done before that, but through Healthy Carolinians that we've got the records for since 2002.
And I believe the questions have had an opportunity to be screened periodically.
Yes.
And I'm not sure there's been a lot of changes in them, so.
The, the questions that we have now are the ones that we've asked on the last survey, we've not made any changes to those, and they match the ones from the state and national level.
My recommendation that to use this behavior survey and continue, if there's any other questions.
I'll stay with it.
I think, I have a right to take part in this discussion. I'm gonna go along probably with the vote, but I do have a request, this is to our superintendent and to the principals, I want to insist that we look at our procedure about the opt-out and make sure that the procedures are in place, that parents and students of age, especially the parents, know that there's an opt-out option. I'm hoping that we haven't gotten, sometimes you get used to doing a certain thing, and you kind of forget, it may be a little bit of a pain to do so, but I want to be assured that that opt-out is passed on to the parents, and we even get signed, informed, or whatever we need to make sure that any student that is exposed to the opt-out option was fully explained to the parents, and that they understood that was an option.
That doesn't come through us, that can.
No, no, I'm just looking at our company, I'm saying this for our superintendent, to the principals we have here, that that needs to be done by all means, and, period, I don't think there's any other option about it. So, any other discussion? If not, we have a motion to, the motion is second, to allow youth risk behavior survey to be taken and to make passes to this, all in favor, second by saying.
Aye.
Aye, can you oppose? If the court is four to one vote, I respect that, right, do that, I understand it totally. Okay. As far as what I said, is there any other action that we need to take? Dr. Paul, you know, we, I'm not sure, I guess what I'm saying is, we've proved it, there's need to be anything else stated, that we make the steps to ensure that the opt-out is signed, and, and we have record of that.
Is it a signed opt-out at this point?
At this point, it's a passive opt-out, and what you do is you notify the parents through later home, through the connected call, and you make available the survey at the best of the schools' survey season, and it gives the parents opportunity to come in and review those questions if they want, it's also online, if they want to review the questions. There's no punishment for students, and students can opt out if they want to, parents can opt out, students can opt out, there's no punishment if a student does not want to take the survey, even if they get in the survey and they know, I don't wanna do this, that's fine, they're allowed to go to another area, usually the library, the gym, wherever the principal decides that they want them to go, there's never been any, anyone made it feel bad because they're not taking the survey, or any, you know, repercussions whatsoever for not taking the survey. I think in the past, we've had maybe ten families that have opted out, and I believe we heard before that the parents that said that, said, you know, it was no problem whatsoever for them to opt out.
Sure, we'll be satisfied with a parent link notification, telling the parents that they have the option to opt out, or the child has the option to opt out, if you're interested in this survey.
I think so, the word passive bothers me, so we prep ours with you in terms of that.
Okay, and I guess the, if you go the route of what you're saying, and you may be able to address this better, get these on, it's, that's the surveys in the past, if you're doing it in a more active way, it's gonna be the human on the school to make sure that they got all of these sent home, brought back.
Received back.
Right, received back, and if you didn't receive them back, does that mean they don't want to, you know, the, the passive one allows the connected call and the parents to come in, and, you know, those kind of things.
I bring up something, when you're gonna read the motion, so we'll move on, I'm just talking about, I guess, I mean, to stay respectful, my personal opinion.
If the board had desired to, the formal step to, to, you know, instructors, superintendent to do a given thing is, is a directive, and you, and you could do that, but I, if he's, he's like there, he's, I think he's getting there.
Oh, I, I just, my direct, that's my wish, is that we make sure that, too, I don't want to put an inordinate amount of work on our principals, but I want to make sure that the message, and all the management we have, is delivered to parents, and they know this, this option.
We've got on our website, under connected call, commission that's on the whole school website.
Very good.
What opt-out procedure is, and just that there is opt-out.
And that also says, principal, make sure the teachers understand that, and pass it on. I'd like to have a survey, each school or parent can come in, I think he's ready for it. Yeah, that's a good suggestion, I think, next time, and review it, thank you, Gary. Gym padding slash safety assessment update, Mr. Moore.
Oh, I didn't see the link up there, I leaned up to Tennessee. I went around to each of the schools, and we, of course, appropriated some funds for Macon Middle School, gym padding, Carkey Jays are in excellent condition, East Franklin's, now, the interesting thing about every one of the elementary schools, you can call it interesting, or different architects, or whatever you wanna call it, or maybe it's a sign of the times, but I don't know, East Franklin, excuse me, South Macon's gym padding extends from sideline to sideline on the baseline, in other words, under the goals, they've got nice padding. Now, the problem with South Macon's is it needs to be renovated, but it's interesting, Carkey, Carkey Jays building was built a couple of years after South Macon, the padding's a little closer to the goal, but doesn't quite extend this far, it's in great condition there. East Franklin's gym was renovated only a few years ago, their pad, their padding, in my estimation, is in the wrong place, it's too high, it's a good three feet off the floor, and you're talking about kindergarten and, and fourth grade children using it, and being an OP teacher, you sort of, you know, that kind of, you notice it, I guess is what I'm saying. They need to be lowered, the pads aren't very wide at all, in other words, they only extend about the width of the free throw lane, they're in great shape, but there's not enough of them, and the other being, Alva Valley, they're in very good condition. Interestingly enough, they extend from about halfway between the free throw lane and the sideline, we, we're all over the place, and I don't, I don't really know why.
Sir?
I'm gonna scare.
That's probably, that's probably a really good point. I'm sure this probably won't happen, but anyway, the, the mats at South Macon need to be reconditioned, I think they can be recovered, recoded, recovered. Carkey Jays are in good shape, East Franklin's good shape, except they just need to be lowered, Alva's are in good shape. You go to the intermediate school, they're in great condition, except we have this odd architectural design over next to the door, which I understand because the way the door was built, it's sort of recessed into the gym, which keeps the door from opening into the hallway, but at the same point in time, you've created a, a block wall that's about eight inches from the end of the floor, I don't understand it, probably need to put a pad there just for safety. The middle schools are on order, they're not up yet, probably will happen when basketball season ends, you know, you order them in hopes that they get there in time, and then by the time season ends, here they come. Highlands, the old gym, it really need to be recovered, and Mr. Jeter said one of the pads was missing, it's just a strip between two doors that in the old days was there, it's been torn down probably. Nana Hala's area that needs to be examined is the, the stage, they have that unique situation in that the stage is at one end of the basketball floor, and that stage is about eighteen inches to twenty-four inches high, and although that, that front of the stage is padded, the actual stage itself is not, well, as you well know, if you're running down court or playing a game in the gym, or whatever you're doing, there's a good possibility that you trip on that eighteen, twenty-four inches, you're gonna fall on the stage, so, that's something that we need to look at as well. So, if the funds.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
Do you have anything temporarily that we can put there on the stage?
Maybe your rock cloud is bad.
Maybe a crash mat, the only thing is, what I would like, the only thing that I think really needs to happen is Nana Hala's, they need to put a strip of Velcro on the top of that pad, right there on the front facing edge of that stage, and then have some more pads, some that are like crash pad, that the Velcro will just stick right on that, so that if a kid falls, they fall on the pad, they don't fall on the top. I know that in the past, when James was PE teacher, he would just lay some up there, I'm not sure how well that actually works, but leave that as it may.
Better than what they have there.
Absolutely, better than a cold, hard pile, absolutely. And I think they're probably doing that, if they'd like some.
Is it missing?
Sauna.
Well, you know, we, we had, we had pads that we put, on the, the flat surface of the stage, previously, I'm not sure whether they are or not, they, they should still be open.
I'll take it. That's what I'd like, so that, you know, so that when those other kids are playing up on the stage, they don't drag those mats, and they're doing gymnastics in there and somebody fall. No, I'm just kidding.
My kids are not gonna be there.
Okay. Sorry.
It would be simple now, definitely.
So, I guess the issue is truly just making it a little more stable up there at Nana Hala. The ones at South Macon, you know, they've got cuts in them, and places where the light switches are, they're placed, but those, that gym's one, it's probably fourteen years old now, it's not brand new. Things begin, and, and you have to realize, there's a lot of use to, it's not just recreational use, it's, uh, school use during the day, it's just wear and tear, so.
Is that something, excuse me, is that something you put in our budget, since the community everything is to upgrade, is there a policy at the state level or in schools?
You know, there's, there's not, as far as gym padding is concerned, it's interesting to rule, the only thing they really address is around the backboard, I guess because there's some of the gyms out, maybe, excuse me, I guess, good common sense. I think Highlands Gym, High School Gym, what I call a competition gym, Nana Hala, Highlands, Franklin High, Macon Middle, I think from a standpoint of interscholastic athletics, they're okay. We're just all over.
I'm sure they would say buy more pads.
Yeah, well, actually, in the old gym, that's where our, like, we talked about what is actually protocol like, we could have some.
Well, they really, they need to be recovered, in a couple of places.
Mr. Moore, I know you have a lot to do, and I'd like someone adding stuff to you, but I personally have to hear what you've said. We made the step, I think, at middle grade, but I think we need, if you don't mind, we need to get a, we need to bring every school we have up to the same type of condition we're talking about at middle grade, we're a safety institute, so I would ask that you, if you would, do that, and find out, and see what needs to be done, and see what type of costs it would be, and bring that back to us.
Okay.
And we can look at the budget item.
I'll just ask Angie to make a note, when we discuss the budget with the principals in the next couple of weeks, that we make sure we discuss this.
I think when we discuss it, the county, they're interested in the safety of the community.
Also, reglets.
Yes. We need to do that, not just reglets, of course, it's our students, stairs, we've talked about, where's, at the other elementary school, if a child gets hurt, like you're talking about it, East Franklin's, yeah, little one runs.
It's all about, I can understand.
Yeah, there we go.
Yeah, we need to, we need to look at, and I think that was an item on the punch list, and why that didn't get fixed, I have no idea.
Anyway, there's not too much to ask, if you could do that for us, we have a full bunch of time, but.
Yes, sir. We'll do it.
Thank you for, thank you for doing this, that's hard to believe. I think proper.
Need to add one out to the policy discussion. Back in December, Sheriff Holland made us aware of the SRO grant. We voted for application. Ms. Cantrell applied for the grant and we found out last week that we were approved for the grant of an amount of about thirty-nine thousand dollars. We spoke to county commissioners home Saturday about the grant and the details of how to go about paying SRO for this grant. And through the county's own, let Angie and John explain how, what we need to do to make that happen.
We did receive thirty-nine thousand, seven hundred and twenty-two dollars in our state allotment last month. And there's a local match of eighteen thousand, one hundred and eighty-five that the county will have to match that. But since the county pays the SRO officers anyway and they're employees of the county, we will just write a check, issue a check to the county at contracted services for that, but we will need a contract between there. And then that's where John was talking about our interlo, interlocal agreement coming into play.
And it will be a very similar interlocal, but more than we looked at in the past, like the Highlands proposing local there. And does need to specify that they're, you know, we'll, we'll supply the funds if we got through that grant, but they're to come from the sheriff's department through, through the county, is that they're already going to remain county employees. But we'll, we should next meeting have a, have a proposed interlocal agreement for us.
We said the monies, we got that thirty-nine something to the county?
Yes.
And the county's been allowing eighteen something?
That's part of the grant. That's part of the ma, their matching part is eighteen thousand.
And that's eighteen to the revenue, but they have already approved that for the portions of the next, Saturday. We're at our budget here and what the county did was Sheriff Holland made the appeal to commissioners and they have approved the eighteen thousand dollars already. Counselor will look at you and ask this question. I got the sense from Sheriff Holland, he, he had someone in place already in mind for this position. And the quicker we can get it, the better, because that means we will have an SRO officer there at Nana Hala School full-time and move forward. So I guess, is there a way to expedite your agreement, your speaking? I would like to get this done to expedite and, but the fast track to get that SRO officer there in Nana Hala.
Sure there is. If the board would, uh, some, someone would make a motion in the board approval to instruct me to draft an SRO interlocal agreement, uh, similar in content to that that we have approved previously with Highlands Police Department and authorize you as chairman to, and the superintendent as they need to execute.
Sheriff, I have, I have, uh, I should have asked it Saturday. It said it was only good for a year. When does the year start? When does it end? Is it fourteen? Is it going to?
We only have to.
I just hate to make it.
It says for the fourteen, fourteen school year.
Year already gone.
Well, I think we could have basically a pan for.
A year's salary.
Yeah, a year's salary. So it would be whenever that person starts.
So it's the fourteen.
Well, they start, they may, they may start middle of February.
That's a good question and we'll, we'll need to ask, the way that they, because, I mean, they applied for this thing six or eight months ago.
Actually, very soon it came available. We applied quickly.
But if we, if we give them the certain amount of funds, um, yeah, John, wouldn't that, I mean, that's twelve months. We would keep them in place twelve months or probably.
We already have the funds and I.
Right. I can't imagine.
We should have issued a check for the full amount to them and so it'll.
Well, all we're, all we're going to be committed to is giving the monies that we received to the grant, so it's no money out of pocket to the county that they can use as our, that'll at least pay for one year after that. Then the county assumes full responsibility for the continued of that position.
That is what the interlocal is going to specify, that after this one year and we don't have grant funds anymore, it's all, it's up to the county.
Mr. Schultz, you have any other questions? I see you thinking.
Well, if they're going to do it for a year, and the year is two thousand fourteen, this time next year, if they don't renew it, it's worse to be out of the job.
Of course, they would be, but that's going to be, but still it's a county's continuing. But it's not our problem.
It's not.
No, we can't look for it. We can't look for that. Right now, all we've got to do is think about, we have it for a year and then, I mean, the sheriff, the sheriff knows what it entails. And so the county commissioners, we just have to, we can't look at the negative.
And that's the thing, it's a good, it's a good sign. Since the county commissioners have already approved that eighteen thousand, they know that they are stepping in to have hired somebody and either you keep them when those funds have all gone or you don't. So they, they're taking it into account.
So we'd like to entertain a motion then to refresh, I'm not going to do the quick dodge. We entertain a motion that we authorize our finance officer to forward the funds that we received from the grant to the county, subject to the interlocal agreement drawn up by our counselor, which would help protect the board saying this is for the one-time grant. We're authorized and paid to the county for the purpose of the SRO officer, and we're only committed to them one year.
And it needs to have an authorization for the board chair and superintendent to sign the agreement that's drawn up by, by council, by our attorney.
I make a motion to, um, have our finance officer, um, put the money into the county, um, for our SRO officer.
Upon completion and the agreement.
Of the agreement. And with, um, add a, a dividend that Chairman Ray Love and our superintendent will be able to sign this to get it in place as soon as possible. Thank you.
Have a motion to second and move forward. Any other discussion? All in favor, say my saying aye. Aye, can you pose? So I'm going to, very good. I think Sheriff Holland appreciate that. I think the people. Nana Hala, I appreciate that. I know it makes me feel much better than you might. Approval items, Cartic J Elementary Plan, uh, is Carol here?
Yes.
For, uh, East, for Cartic J. I started to jump East Franklin very quickly, sorry.
Okay, as you know, um, last month, we had one of our schools present their school improvement plan. And each year, our schools have to do a plan and they base it on their data that they have. And as part of Title I and federal programs, you have to do a plan. But also the state requires each school to have a plan. And fortunately, those plans mesh pretty well, so we try to include things from both of them. So the schools just are required to do one document rather than two or three different ones. So, um, because our EOG and EOC data came back later this year, we, we did not have it at the beginning of the year. That's why the plans are a little later being presented this year. Um, do you have any questions? What, what the schools have done, if they've looked at their proficiency at the beginning of the year, they have decided through the school improvement team, what their target's going to be, and then how much improvement they're going to try to show in the course of the year. And they write those based on whatever programs they use and whatever materials they have. And then they will come back in the middle of the year, which we're almost there. They just, they're finished benchmarking, I think, tomorrow. And, uh, they'll have data from the mid-year so they can see how they've improved, um, from the beginning of the year to the middle of the year so that we see if we're on target to be where we need to be at the end.
I'll beat you up this every, this, each school makes their own plan, correct, Carol? If they take input.
They have to. They have a school improvement team that comes together. And they, uh, there are some things that are kind of givens. Particularly, we have a new, uh, the new Read to Achieve law and the Comprehensive Reading Plan for K-12 that the state has. And so the things we've been putting in our plan for several years now are right in line with what the state, state's asking. So we didn't have to do a whole lot of things different. Some of them look a little bit different, um, just because they, they added or deleted or moved things around, but for the most part, they're pretty uniform.
And the crisis management piece that was on here, we.
That's the safety plan.
That's a safety plan. We didn't see that, but that's just a standard. It was not.
The, the law says that.
It is required to be done by the school improvement teams in closed session and you are going to have to consider them in closed session.
Right.
And, uh, Dr. Baldwin has to review them and then if he has any thing, you know.
Can I ask one question? That's what I was thinking. Thank you very much.
But they're not for open, that, we, we don't want that. They're, and those look a little different too, because maybe one school put their code blue, code green, or whatever they call their crisis management plan. It, they, they've written it that way. Some of them have written it more generally as a safety plan. And, um, if I understood right, when we were talking about policies, we're going to have to have that in there, but we haven't ever had anything that said we had to have it. I remember years ago when we started doing it at the school level, that, um, it was recommended that we do it. So, you know, we've had those for years and I, I think they've served us well. We have good process and laws. And these people can explain, I guess, more about specifics if you have it. Anything about Cartic J's?
Well, the crisis management plan, did you say they're not color-coded or they are color-coded?
Uh, they are color-coded, but some of them are, you're getting, you would be looking at more details. Some schools sent in all the different pieces, some sent in their general plan, but they all practice them. So they have their, their codes in place.
Couple of years ago, Sheriff's Department, Amy Burrows, went to all the schools and sort of made certain that all the plans were fairly uniform, although each school has its own circumstances. I feel comfortable with the crisis management plans. They're, they were more to set up for.
The color codes all stay the same though.
They did.
Okay. I, I just want to make sure that, that color codes stay the same because that was a requirement.
That's, that's the thing that, um, that Burrows looked at was to make sure that we had a uniform policy throughout the district in terms of those color codes. We didn't want to go with, uh, Nana Hala, not understand what the code blue was. I was getting something different in front of my eyes.
And, and Dr. Baldwin, I, I might, might be mistaken about this, but I thought the change in that statute said that the, the school board was to, what is directed to review those in, in closed session. So we'll have a closed session at some point for that, for that purpose. You'll get, you'll get to review all of them.
In the interest of time, I think the board has had a chance to look at all of these. So unless there is a question, I'll read it, send a reason, make Carol go through each of one and give us an explanation of what we've had. So unless someone has a question, I would move that we ask the question, Alan, if none, we move forward and just spare the agony and just let's approve them in mass.
We understand.
Check out to that or any questions? If not, I would entertain a motion then that we approve those as presented. Have a motion to prove that they're presented. I hear a second. All in favor, say my saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, can you pose? I'm going to say you're the first thing I would do.
We were trying to give you that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Mr. Chairman, can I ask you a question? Was that an approval of reading that test scores?
Yes.
Okay, so the crisis management, do you, yeah, I think you're directed to review them if you want to make any changes, so.
I'm approving based on what you said. This is, it's required that our superintendent, we've approved it, but our superintendent has to review it and bring it back to us for final approval. And I, and what am I going to add to that?
As long as we're clear that that's.
Right, that's.
All the crisis management plans we look at are just elementary?
All of them.
I think all of them.
Next month, we'll have the rest of them, the rest of the school improvement plans.
I just wanted to clarify, you're not jumping ahead on the crisis management plan.
Yeah, that's one of the whole bases. You, you said much better than I did, the whole basis. Local flexibility on testing, Dr. Baldwin.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Back at our facility in the U C community, uh, gave you some information about the local flexibility on testing that pertains to standard six on teacher evaluation. One of the concerns that we had was the opt-out waiver for grade four, science and math end of, uh, PSC final exam. Part of that concern was due to the fact that we weren't making sure that the students were as well prepared as they could be for fifth grade and therefore did not reflect poorly on the, uh, fifth grade science teacher's standard six on their evaluation. So I met with the MBI science teacher, along with John Beal and Darling Prophet of NCAE. We had a discussion about, um, the possibility of waiving the grade four science and social studies PSC final exam. The information that I got from the science teachers at MBI was that they were okay with us waiving those tests at this time. They're still going to think about it for the next four years. But they would like for, uh, the principals of the elementary school to give us some assurance that, uh, the fourth grade science curriculum will be taught and, uh, the teachers' students will be held accountable for some sort of pre-test or post-test. That information will be made available to the fifth grade science teachers so that they can plan the, uh, fifth grade science curriculum accordingly. I'm going to meet with the principals tomorrow. We're going to have a discussion about that. I feel certain that the elementary principals will be in agreement to do that. Certainly appreciate the cooperation of the MBI science teachers and, uh, Mr. Beal and Prophet. I'll, uh, also discuss that with the principals. I'll, uh, they, those MBI science teachers will obviously have an opportunity to communicate with me or the NCAE and I'll bring the proposal to you in February to February fourth, making it for approval for the waiver of the, of those exams, the third, or the fourth grade science and social studies, possibly some of the middle grade CTE courses and.
Definitely the CTE, middle grade.
Is that, does Mr. Maslin?
Mr. Maslin knows about it and the teachers, we had talked, discussions.
Okay, and is that English for, uh, PSC final exam at the high school due to this conflict, due to this conflict with the senior project in this grade?
Very good. Any questions to Dr. Baldwin? Next, um, very good. On builds and grounds, Mr. Moore, Earth Environmental Services proposed for Nana Hala School.
Yes, sir. With the retirement of one of our employees, we're now going to be required to contract the services of running that plant, that wastewater treatment plant at Nana Hala School. And that is available for review.
I would like to add, uh, Mr. Moore is in the way of this kind of thing because I just found out about it this afternoon. I spoke to, uh, Deb Curtis about the possibility of, um, Mr. Wilson retiring and this contract. This contract only contains to the Nana Hala School Water Treatment Facility. Found that today though, that, um, Earth Environmental Services would also pick up Colosseja for an additional three hundred dollars a month. Which would be about three thousand dollars per month less than what we're currently paying for those services.
Three thousand dollars less a month?
Less per month.
Because your contract with the same person has been done.
Well, because we've had an employee do it rather than contract.
Well, but what I found out is that our school. And our middle services, so there'll be.
That's where the savings come from.
That's where the savings come from.
He retired, rehired, transitioned, he gets retired.
Works for me. But as you can see, that's in some, you know, how much it is per month and what is required. And of course, that envisages the federal requirements and PAs.
Well, I guess how would we, you know, word in the motion is. Well, it will be, what will actually be, I'm asking for approval for tonight, would be a sum of eleven hundred dollars per month for Cartic J Elementary School and, or, I'm sorry, Colosseja Elementary School and Nana Hala.
It's already budgeted, or do they have to do over here?
But well, he's retiring, so we can.
Basically, it saves about three thousand dollars a month.
I think you need to, I think the board needs to authorize the expenditure and amend the budget.
Hey, you'll bring a budget amendment next month and do that.
Can you give you a, a motion to spend, uh, spend the funds to, for Colosseja and Nana Hala?
For the purposes outlined in the.
Okay. I make a motion to have Dr. Baldwin, um, go with the Nana Hala and Colosseja to save the, um, funds which is outlined in.
We have a motion. Any other questions? If not, all in favor, say my saying aye. Can you pose? So move. If business and finance, approval items. Business and finance, approval items, fund redistributions, Franklin High School.
Just have the one that's time for Franklin High School and they are moving athletic fund to the following varsity sports that you see there. They give each varsity sport $220 and then they give each JV sport $140.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion to review second. All in favor, is anyone saying aye? Can you oppose? So moved. Budget amendments, Angie. We have a state current expense, federal and capital outlay.
And I apologize for not having them in your folders at this time, but I just got them done today. So we'll keep them.
But again, let's just go all through all four and we'll, we'll approve them in mass, Angie.
Okay, the first one is the state. We do, we did receive an additional $528,939. The bulk of that being in transportation. We got our second allotment for transportation, which amounted to three hundred, a little over $345,000.
But that was more than you were expecting?
No, we usually get around that amount around January, December, January. The other is $114,946, that Paula secured in special state reserve money for her EC program. And the other is $39,722, which is the SRO grant that you all just approved, which that'll be a wash through our state fund. We received also $16,518 for digital learning grant. And the other are smaller amounts. We got a little bit of an adjustment on our teacher instructional, like point one five position that they added. So that amounts to about $8,332 and the other are just minimal.
What would be dealing with that $16,000?
That's the digital learning grant, TM.
That's mainly got to be used for staff development. We had to do a plan for it. The state allotted $5.5 million. Half of that to be given out to the state's an eighteen allotment, which was the $16, excuse me. The other half is through a competitive grant. We did allot a grant. It's for staff development for transitioning to digital learning and the new home-based system that's out there to use staffs.
We're trying to get our teachers to allow to digital access.
Re love. Do you have a question to make on the state? Not current expense?
Current expense is no additional revenue. I'm just actually correcting codes on those four. Trying to get codes straightened out where everything's kind of consistent with the state charter accounts also.
Questions?
The auditor's office. Keep the auditor's office.
Yes.
Federal?
Federal, we have no additional revenue in federal either, but part of one is that PRC 50 that you see listed there first. And what we're basically doing is moving the money, each school requested for Ms. Waldrop to move some money from their tutoring accounts into their supplies and material money. And she's approved for them to do that and.
Because you said North Carolina continues to take our supplies?
Correct. And the same thing in the 105 and the 109. We're moving from tutor to buy supplies and materials.
Well, thank you and thank you, Carol.
And capital outlay?
Last one is capital outlay. The $38,380 is the revenue that we get from the state that's a payment on our school bus, a new yellow school bus, and it just has to run through our books. And this is what, this is the entry to make that happen. And the other entry is the $5,000 that you all approved last month to budget for the MATS at Macon Middle School. So that's to get it on our books to run it through to budget that out. Out of the Cartujay, you are approved to do that out of the Cartujay revenue.
What is our balance on Cartujay, please?
Probably, we have between 85 and 90.
After this, after this line?
Okay.
Any questions? If not, I have a motion to approve.
I would make a motion to approve the calling state current expense, federal and capital outlay amendments that currently exist.
Motion to approve here. Do I hear a second?
Aye.
A motion second. All in favor, say what I'm saying. Aye? Can you oppose?
Go ahead, girl.
Am San contract, Angie?
Okay, you remember a few months ago, we put out a RFP and received sealed bids on our custodial supplies. And we had two people who, who placed bids on time. And that was Am San, which is the current provider, and Dodge Packaging, a local vendor. And summarize everything, the, Am San submitted the same bid at the same price, so their same services and same supplies and materials that they currently provide at the same price, which is a total for us of $142,722.36 a year. And it's a monthly program. Dodge submitted three quotes. One for the initial setup was $18,345.13. The second one was the average monthly use. And Ms. Dodge is here tonight and I'm sure she'll be happy to answer any questions anybody might have. But she actually went out in the school and surveyed what they used on a monthly basis. And she got some information from me that Am San provided me a monthly report on their usage. And that's where that figure came from, which is $96,7343, which is a monthly amount, which totals $116,816 for 12 months. And then the floor wax and the stripper for the summer months was $19,441.36. So this totals $153,867.65. Am San, as far as equipment goes, Am San will take our equipment, if we have something to repair of, Am San takes our equipment and they repair it. They pick it up and repair it and normally give us a loaner if it's going to be any length of time. Dodge Packaging will also pick up our equipment for free and take it to a vendor that they are working with. And Ms. Dodge has actually sent me another email last week where she's also has established business with Brown's Electronics here in Franklin and they work on vacuum cleaners and stuff. So I told her I'd be sure and make y'all aware of that tonight. And they will also repair our equipment at a cost to Macon County Schools for repairing the equipment. And then return it back free of charge delivery.
I have questions. We'll give others a chance to ask questions first. Any other questions, both of you remember? I'm trying to make sure I'm, let me, I'm going to run it with Angie, make sure my figures are right. So, and Ms. Dodge here, she might be able to, to clarify on hers when I get to that point. Basically, what we have with Am San is that we have a flat monthly fee that we pay. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Correct. It's $11,072. That's it? That's just a fee?
Plus tax, yes.
Plus tax. Now, as regards to usage? What happens if the bill for the month goes above that amount? Is that a set fee that they've locked in?
Yes.
That we will not exceed that amount? Is that right? So it's locked in. Then at year end, they go back and look at what we have used of that total. For example, I'm going to use this, we're showing average monthly of $96,73, they're 11. So what happens to that difference at year end, Am San does what?
If we are under our budget.
Right.
This while.
These figures, it would be, whatever figure that is. It looks like about, I'm like 14, let's say $1,400 monthly.
If we are under our budget, they will, they have a sales rep that visits the schools. And if we are under our budget, he will determine what piece of equipment is needed for that what particular location. And he will provide that piece of equipment. For example, last year, we were under budget and he provided, I can't remember the number. I think it was four to five vacuum cleaners for different schools.
And he shows what the normal cost was to be and he kind of gives us, so we know what we're getting for the money. Is that right?
Yes.
Do we have anything that shows what our repair bill would have been for the equipment?
I do not.
In other words, if I understood what we're saying, Am San fixes it. Or Dodge is saying they would, they would do it, but just parts and layers. But we have no way of knowing what benefit that really is to us off the Am San because we don't have the figure saying how much repair and cost there would have been. Does that make, you understand what I'm asking?
I do not have any.
We don't have any way to compare that.
I can request that from Am San and see.
Right. I guess that's where I'm at. I probably want to see that and, and you, I'm going to say some things and correct me if I'm wrong. On the face of it, Dodge's figure looks higher, but that also includes an initial setup fee of $18,345, which would not be a yearly fee ongoing. It's a one-time setup fee at the beginning of the contract. Am I understanding right?
That would probably be from, you want to speak?
Yeah, it's fine. No problem. In other words, on your proposal, there's this initial, it says initial setup fee of 18. Is that a one-time fee? That's not a yearly.
I was, I was trying to figure out what was given to me based on what y'all buy. What it would cost to stock all of the janitor closets and get them up to, you know, everything that I, is in that first bid. Also, the price of what I would charge per case is in that bid. So I feel like that y'all have never known exactly what one case costs. And also with this figure, the average monthly uses of $9,673 would be four or five months of the year. That's your busiest months. That doesn't include the summer months and then the months with vacations and, um, also with the floor wax. It's just an astronomical amount of wax. I have no way of knowing exactly how much you need or how much you bought in the past because I just didn't have this figures. So, um, what we would like to do is sell you what you need and charge you that. And we feel like that it's not going to cost any more than $11,000 a month. That's what I thought was in my.
I'm picky, I guess, on that.
Go ahead, please.
Your thing, by the way it was termed to us, had an average monthly usage of $96,73. Now, was, where did that figure come from?
Well, I tried to base, I did a little survey on the August, September and October usage that was supplied to me. And I averaged it out and I said that you would need 80 cases of toilet paper a month. It's probably more closer to 70, but I didn't really have any way to know. So I just based it on an average of all the different items that you.
Like in reps, so basically, you've looked at what we used.
I've only supplied with three months.
Kind of projected for us off of a three-month period, you projected what you think the cost, using that as the average, it would cost to order those supplies that we've used in the past. That's what the cost would be. Is that, is that a correct way to say it?
But we would only charge you as you're, you know, what you use. And that would all be itemized every month, you know. The, the cost would not be, um, it'd be different every month.
Right. I guess I'm just trying to ask you a thing where you had, where you got that figure from. If you, you've actually looked at what you used, that was how you based that. Is that correct?
I included that in my proposal, you know, what I had used and how I had tried to average it. It's not an awful lot, really, when you get down to it, like, um, 30 cases of can liners. You know, it's, it's just not huge.
Well, I guess what I was trying to do, this makes, in a corny way of saying, I was trying to make sure that we're comparing apples to apples when we're comparing the two bids. In my mind, we'll make sure that we, that you've had the opportunity to look at it and, and we're talking about the same, the same thing, so to speak. So what your bid said was, your initial setup of $18,345 would be, assuming like any equipment, let's say dispensers, any second-line ones, lines?
No, no cost on dispensers. But it would just, what I was trying to figure out would be exactly, you know, stocking every thing with the disinfectant cleaner that they need, the floor cleaner they need, the window cleaner, the wipers, the buckets, the mops, the, you know, they don't all need mop bucket, mop buckets, but some of them might, um, just kind of really guess them.
So this figure should change. After you did inventory of the different schools.
And what they wanted to order.
There, then that figure could change. Is that right?
Yes. What would have to happen, Mr. Red Love, on that, from that standpoint, our custodians would have to do a purchase, well, custodians would have to fill out an order form and our secretaries at each school would have to submit a purchase order to the finance office to actually send to Dodge Packaging to fill that purchase.
So it would be in, so I guess what I'm trying to say is we have a figure, but that's based off, that's really, there's no way to pinpoint that exactly unless we had an inventory and know what would be there at year end. Am I understanding right?
Or we knew what Am San had sold you in the past.
Or they'd sold us what was remaining in inventory that moved.
Right, and some kind of accounting for those vacuum cleaners and that money that's left over. And I don't know if there's, I mean, how to do it, other than what we've tried to guess. We would love to have your business. We feel like that we are capable of handling it and, um, you know, it would mean a lot to us. You'd be one of our biggest customers. So I don't feel like the $153,867.65 is totally correct. I'd like to do that figure.
I guess that's what I'm concerned about. I don't know that, as my saying goes. So I personally am not quite ready to, to, I'm just thinking for myself, to make a decision at this point. I think I'd be to see the, if Am San could give us an idea of what is the average of those repairs, what they would have cost. And I think they'd be able to give us some idea of what.
Also a case count of what they've sent you every month.
Right. We are going to have to be careful.
Okay.
Because this does, this is an amount of money that requires a formal bid process.
Correct.
You can't just willy-nilly go back to eat any bidder and say, redo this and tell me what you really meant to say. It's, we're going to have to be careful.
Right.
We might have to rebid to get to a point where.
I think so because, like Gojo, when we go to try to get the free dispensers, they were like, well, how many? How much? You know, they wanted to know.
Then, John, I don't feel comfortable, but maybe it might necessarily go back to a rebid process. I think for us to know, we need to get maybe some more specifics given to the two vendors and, and get more specific information. At least that's me personally made, to make a decision.
Well, we had with Am San, not the providing, they're providing supplies.
I'm going to do that right now. I think, I think we're on a month-to-month basis, aren't we, Angie?
Well, this particular RFP said that it would actually start January.
Okay.
Because we were trying to get back on a school year cycle. Somehow or another, ten years past, it got to a calendar year, January to December. So we're trying to get it back and do this 18 month from January to June, for June.
But, Mr. Chairman, that, if you're not prepared to award one of these bids, and I think that is my recommendation, if you, if you need a lot more information or the same information but stated differently, we better rebid.
I'm speaking just for myself. I feel like for me to make a vote, I need to, it needs to be pinpointed better. And I hate to put it better than word, but I think we need to itemize and get the questions I asked a little bit with better information that I can look at and feel like I'm actually making a fair comparison and a fair decision. That's just me. I'll shut up now and let the rest of the board speak.
I agree with that.
If we choose to rebid and then make a motion?
Yes, sir.
May I make a motion that we rebid the contract for custodial contract? We, that we make a motion to rebid that with more definite numbers for Macon County Schools.
Have a motion to rebid. Do I hear a second? Can I say one more thing? At the same time, I think we need to give Angie some guidance about what we're, I'm trying to tell, I'm trying to say. Yeah, what, in other words, do you need guidance, Angie, about what we're, about what, the more detail we're talking about or, or what guidance do we need, if we need to put in the motion for you?
Or even the fact that we're trying to get it to apples to apples?
Right.
Well, I'll, I have the three quotes that Ms. Dodge submitted based on the reports that I gave her from Am San that they had sent to the school district for August, September and October, or July, August and September. And then I thought she was in the schools determining what we had used. So that's what I was going by with the $96,7343 for a monthly cost. Now, the repairs estimate I need, I definitely need to get from Am San and see a figure on that. I understand that. So if that's the only additional thing that we need in detail.
Kind of. I think, I want to be totally fair about this.
Sure.
Get there and talk about. So, um, but also know I can't tiptoe or infringe on Am San's privacy, so to speak, when we're rebidding. And I really don't know of a better way to compare the amounts other than what you've done, really. I mean, I think we've given Ms. Dodge three months. Did you, did you need any others to look at our usage? Not necessarily to compare prices, but we should, I think we should.
Well, through.
Redact prices, but just give her a chance to make sure you understand the usage that we're, we're going through. we're, we're going through.
Just guessing how many powder dispensers you have in the school and how many set dispensers. There should be a number. I mean, the people that you put, you put in to get a, get them free, they want to, they, they need numbers. But I feel like that my contract is lower than his already. And if we look at it in.
To some degree, but I need to know approximately what we spent. For me to make a fair decision, I need to know about this repair because that's a crucial part of the whole process.
And what's left over at the end of the year. You mean, you know what I mean?
Understand.
I thought that my figure said eleven thousand eight hundred, but that had been penciled
I think.
Whatever it's under contract. No, I was looking through the Ensen one that was sent to me.
Ms. Dodge, could you clarify again exactly what's included in that initial setup?
Okay. Like I said, it was the stock, everybody's closet full, I mean, it's, I know that everyone wants to quit on the bleach, so it's just vacuum bags.
You don't have a choice on that with their work.
I know. It's, the main one, though, is the average monthly use is what we really need to be considering because I said that with this, what I meant was that this would only be billed no more than eleven thousand dollars a month and that actually you are not going to use but only maybe ninety-five hundred, ninety-six hundred dollars worth of supplies based on what you buy. You buy fifty cases of toilet paper, you buy eighty cases of towels, you buy twenty-eight cases of trash bags, you know, those kind of uses is what you have to know.
Ms. Dodge, then, if you had better numbers on what exactly was used throughout the year, rather than just what you think the average uses is, could you get to a total outdoor for the year cost?
Which is, yes.
Because I think that's what they really need.
I think that's what I'm, I did.
I'm not being, we're going to move forward. We have a motion, which I think, I mean, that would.
That'd be fine.
Rebid this to give both parties time to give us some additional information that we feel like we might need to make a decision out of a second. I have no further questions. Any other discussion? All in favor of the motion, say what you say.
Aye.
You opposed?
Sorry, ma'am.
So, please. Thank you. Change in IRS mileage rate. And what I would, I guess I can ask this. I would like, Angie, asking too much that we be able to get that done and get that, try to get the information so we can be able to make a decision at the next board meeting?
No.
Oh, very good, thank you. Change in IRS mileage rate, Angie?
Um, this is the memo from the Office of State Budget Management that we received. They have lowered the mileage rate to fifty-six cents per mile as opposed to fifty-six and a half cents per mile. So, we just always try to stay in class with the IRS.
I have a motion to reduce our mileage rate by a half cent. I have a motion to approve. Here, a second.
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. You opposed? So, moved. Enter Smith and White Audit Contract.
This is our yearly audit contract and these are the same, this is the same firm that we've been using for the past three, four years and they have not increased their price. It will still remain thirty-five thousand dollars.
Okay, this is who you feel something with?
Yes, very.
You said thirty-five thousand.
Thirty-five thousand, what did I say?
You meant thirty-five hundred, didn't you? It's true that it's thirty-five thousand.
It's thirty-five thousand for the year.
I couldn't remember. God, that makes.
I made a motion to accept this contract.
A motion to accept the contract with the county firm management. Do I hear a second? I heard a second. All in favor, say aye. You opposed? So, moved. Those folks are pretty good at working for, or work with, not working for. We're going to have to work for thirty-five thousand dollars. Uniform contract renewal update, Angie?
This is just a point of information so that you all know. We recently went through our cost of uniforms that we provide to the custodians, all the custodians in all the schools, maintenance and bus garage. And we had a couple of people interested in getting our business and sent houses who we're currently with. And they actually have signed up with U.S. Communities, which you all are aware of. We went with the bus garage a month or so ago with the filters and stuff. They have signed on with them, so they actually ended up being the less expensive vendor. And we estimate our savings, I got an estimate of savings of about twelve thousand dollars. However, we did have some ladies and gentlemen that were in the schools that were not taking advantage of the uniform service, so they've signed on and added on. So, we probably won't see that full savings because we've added some people, but overall, we will definitely see the savings.
Thank you.
So, do we need to vote for acceptance of the contract?
It was a, it's a service, so we just went ahead, Dr. Baldwin and I talked about it.
Thank you. Update on the twenty-five percent of teachers, Dr. Baldwin?
I've had a conversation with Mr. Moore, about, I think, if I had twenty-five percent of teachers that was part of this contract. We narrowed it down to the conversation of three options just before we were explaining up to the other.
As we discussed earlier, the primary consideration is following the legislature, which is the individual has to have worked at the use, at least three years in the make the case system and been proficient in all areas in North Carolina evaluation system. Beyond that, as we had talked about earlier, we gave you a number in the list. We have three options that we think are worthy of your consideration. First of all, utilizing teacher of the year data going back three years, taking twenty-five percent from each particular school and adding the itinerants as their own school. And as we talked earlier about those itinerant teachers, those are those teachers that may work in multiple schools. That's one option. Another option being taking that three-year teacher of the year data.
Mr. Moore, I interrupt you.
I'm sorry. Yes, sir.
On the first one, so we take teacher of the year for the last three years?
Yes, sir.
In schools, and that gives us how many?
That gives us.
Thirty-three?
Well, we've had some people that no longer work for us.
Yeah, they're retired.
I think there's about six, if I'm not mistaken, that gives us twenty-seven individuals.
And then your first proposal, and then you would go back kind of to the thing we're looking at and then decided the remaining schools, a pro rata amount, or how would you pull the over?
Well, the difficulty there and.
If it's about a twenty-five person, yeah, I'm still right.
What you come up with is when you, and I, I said that it was down to twenty-seven, it's actually twenty-nine, excuse me. What you end up with is the difficulty of how do you determine this school earns point two-five, this one earns point seven-five, there obviously more than that, but it begins to be a problem with finding a solid number as far as twenty-five percent of each school's concern.
Even with that, we still have that difficulty in those fractions. All right, thank you. Go ahead.
All right.
We'll make sure.
No.
Number two.
That's about it, point, because it is, when you begin to look at how you're going to separate that, it becomes arbitrary. You like those legal terms, don't you, John?
I love that term, yeah.
But not capricious. Option number two is to take that three-years teacher of the year data, that's those twenty-nine individuals, taking everyone else that's eligible and selecting them. In other words, the district as a whole, rather than.
Don't worry about the individual schools and luck of the draw.
Well, he, by doing, by using utilizing teacher of the year data, we would guarantee that each school would have free representation.
Right, I understand. Well, the others over the.
Well, not ready. Wanted to retire.
Yeah, you've got a few that, there may be the issue of one or two retired, but at least each school would have representation that way rather than just, which the next option is just twenty-five percent, not utilize the teacher of the year data.
Put everybody's name in the pot and draw.
Everybody have representation.
Right, every school would be represented.
I think we know for a fact that everyone has representation.
That's probably not the correct term.
On number three.
The chances are. See, I'm.
Number two. Number two, yes. And number three is just a sheer random drawing, just put everybody in a hat and we draw the, we draw the number of names and it doesn't matter what the enrollment are. What kids do in the drawing?
But number three does not make sure every school is involved.
That is correct.
And I would like to know what John thinks about that.
I think as long as it's a random drawing, you're not showing, based on that, or arbitrarily choosing, it's your luck of the draw.
Is that what John thinks?
I mean, I think the whole thing is ridiculous.
We understand that.
Well, that's a shocker.
I know. Let me go out way out on a limb. I don't know. We, I think what we're, I think the heart of what we're trying is which one of them is least hurtful to the morale of employees.
Right.
And that's, and that is tricky.
Not one.
We are, we're trying to find the least bad option now.
And least arbitrary.
Yeah, and least arbitrary.
We are having Dean Shatley is going to come down, he's going to come down to Nashville next Wednesday. And from four until, as long as people want to ask questions, he's going to talk about how this affects an individual if they choose to accept this contract. It will be streamed live to Highlands and Nantahala. Thank you, Jim. And those individuals will be able to ask questions as well. I'm not sure what kind of attendance we'll get, but I do want teachers to have the opportunity to ask questions as to how this impacts them if they choose to accept.
To make one more point about the teacher of the year information, in looking at the teacher survey data, what we found was that the information we got was limited. And the problem with most of the information that we received is that it, it would have actually have been arbitrary to use most of it. In other words, if the criteria that the teacher suggested other than teacher of the year was, was not always based on performance, it was based on arbitrary things, so.
Or, or criteria that are not allowed in the language of, of session law. It doesn't say, go find your best and brightest, youngest, most promising, you know, go-getters and offer them, you can't.
So, it's been followed back to teacher of the year. They're still allowing teacher input into this session.
So, Mr. Chairman, the, Mr. Dr. Baldwin, we bring in, I believe I've heard, as Mr. Angie was saying, you can't bring out the teachers who've been with us three years who would be up for tenure in the old language and getting those teachers that were going to receive tenure via the principal, put them on a full-year contract.
That's taking the specific age groups.
So, you can't.
Because we had on the, we had on the reverse of that, we had other teachers that offered, how about ones closer to retirement? Rather than, I mean, I understand perfectly what you're saying. Teachers in the state of North Carolina have not received new raise for six years. You know, those people that are on the lower end of the scale and have been on the same number.
Plus what Mr. Shields is suggesting, it also allows to, to secure these folks with a contract.
Four more years. So, that's a perfectly reasonable thought, but I don't know from, that to me seems to be, I don't want to use age discrimination or experience discrimination, but when you've had other teachers talking about those that are getting ready to retire should proceed to offer it, you know. You know, we all that is, done what we're doing, that what we do.
And what you're talking about makes sense and that's trying to apply a sensible rationale of an insensible law.
It makes perfect sense because it would give those people an opportunity to receive a little extra compensation, but I don't know how we could apply it.
Wait, this is just information for us to contemplate, am I understanding right? Anything to add into the, into the.
That's three, that's three options we're considering right now. Welcome your input as we go through this process. As we meet with the teachers from February the fifth, we may receive additional input from them that will help us make the decision. But in February, I'll be bringing probably, it will be one of these options or something very similar to one of these options, asking you to consider for a vote.
And I do, let me, let me say again, I think the most crucial thing we can do to get together a plan is to get the board and the administration on the same page as to how we're going to do it. And then everybody's going to do it without any person-to-person input so that we can be as fair as we can figure out how to be.
On the meeting you're having on February the fifth, Dr. Baldwin, your council meeting and stuff like that emphasize it's the information session, not political bias, because they just, you just don't get anywhere with that. It starts into that kind of stuff. It's a splashback situation, it's negative.
And I think Dean and Chris have dealt with this amount. They've actually went to, I know they went to Jackson County.
They've done five or six.
They've done multiple counties where they've actually, so I think they're used to the.
Now, we will be making more statements. That is that this was not our idea. This, this idea came from another interview.
And I think most, I think for the most part, people understand where this is coming from. And to be honest with you, I've had several teachers talk to us and say that they understand how difficult it is for us to try to come up with something.
Now, I'll say one final thing, I think the expertise of the ones that go in, Mr. Shields, they will correct it very quickly, like from the Vash you said, and give it back on track. Just the fact.
But it's very emotional.
We'll make that, we'll make that statement again, but it's not. It's not political.
We're here just to have legal counsel provide you answers to your questions that you may have.
The thing is, it's not just us. I was part of, like, we read the papers down now, they're going to put the same thing. They don't have any answers either, so it's not, it's.
Thank you, Mr. Moore and Dr. Baldwin, bringing that up. As you said, we know it's very difficult to say, as we're seeing it, I would see a good way to get there, but.
Once again, I'll refer to the statute superintendent, Jim.
Okay. I'm not sure he'll agree with that, Mr. Moore, but that's, it sounded good. Moving on, more education information, they regarding facilities review committee of the whole, Mr. Cockerhenny, Mr. Henny. I keep trying to move you there, you're not there yet, so just don't, don't.
It's your stuff.
And don't get excited.
That's him proving, well, we don't pay him so much money. He's so good, we can't get him.
I guess where we need to start off this discussion is, are we still having the problem of more than a, more than two of you are desirous of going to attend these meetings? The facilities review committee meetings? Is that, are we still there? Is that still a problem?
I think I'm the fly-in though, but I'm trying to gather information on what Canada's doing and what their, how you go through processes and stuff like that, collecting information of how they work through things. I think I'm the person that shows up as a third person. Like Saturday, I was there, but I was collecting information on how things operate. And I think when it comes to facilities, I'm just trying to get a picture of what's, how the process, and, and I think I'm the problem.
Well, we used to have meetings every month, now we don't have very often anyway, so, you know.
I think your building is open, you all came in, you got your highlights, you got all that.
That's basically right. So, I mean, you know, I, I wouldn't have any problem if you want to change it to everybody or whether, you know, one at a time, I can step down, he build that time, or something like, whatever, make it easier, it doesn't matter.
Well, that's, that is an option that would be simpler is to, to name Mr. Shields an alternate and if you don't happen to go, you can let him know and he's there as, as the committee member in your place. I, I brought this up with Chester Jones, who's the county attorney, bless his heart right now, but anyway, who said that his, his main concern was that commissioners would, and I can understand this, and I think you did when you put the brakes on this at the, at your last discussion, the commissioners might feel like, if they look up and five school board members walk in, they're going to think, well, are they trying to pull the vassal on us? I think, you know, it would be, we, and I'm not sure we have yet defined well enough that that committee only meets for advisory purposes, does not vote on anything, doesn't do anything of that nature. I think that is true. I just don't know that we've defined it well enough. Renee helped me find in the minutes when it was created and it's just, it doesn't say definitively enough to fix it. So, I will tell you if that's, if that's the biggest problem we have right now, and Tommy, you don't mind if Mr. Shields is named as sort of the alternate. and Tommy, you don't mind if Mr. Shields is named as sort of the alternate committee member or somebody, I guess, I think if somebody would make a motion to, to make that appointment, then that'll fix that problem.
There's not an issue with a board member just going and observing and not taking part. Like, we're still at that point, if you have more than three.
They're there, they figured you're going. But we're always in the almost...
I mean, they didn't say.
Yeah.
Wait a minute, which ones are?
The problem is, you, we, we have been announcing, making a public announcement that these, that that committee will be.
Right.
If you wanted the three board members there to sit down and discuss what is school board business, you're having a school working.
I think it's time, I'm, I'm, I should follow our counselors' suggestion.
So that needs to be...
I make a motion that, um, for the liaison between the school board and the county commissioners as it presently is, myself and Mr. Cave, Mr. Cave will have Gary Shields as the alternate.
They would have him as alternate.
Just alternate for the committee.
Alternate for the committee, um, for the liaison to the county commissioners.
Here are the motions, your second.
I'll second it.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say my say aye.
Aye.
Do you oppose? So moved.
I think you get it.
Yes, you know that, you get involved, right, we brought this into discussion.
And I understand, that's like the, yeah, I understand, good deal.
And just for the sake of, let me just say briefly, I don't even think going to, the, uh, open meetings law is pretty expansive as to what is board, you know, you act as a board member, just sitting there listening, really there as a board member. It's close, because you'd already announced at any public meeting, just not a school board meeting, so.
Anyway, I think it's best for the board, thank you. Okay, and National School Counseling Week?
Uh, we just wanted to draw your attention, next week is National School Counseling Week, and, um, just wanted to recognize the contribution that school counselors make to Macon County schools and how much we appreciate them. I'm done.
I'm, I know. I was trying to be, not be rude, we're having a discussion over here, Paula, thank you.
Just don't act a wife.
I think there's silence going on, realized, realized we got caught in the act here, so, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I also want to point out that, um, Paula was, as I've recognized, has been one-hundred percent compliant, so although her IDA, submission requirements, so we think we could be one-hundred percent compliant, especially on this day and night. We think that is a good...
Aye, aye.
We touched on it, hard to say long time.
Well...
Close.
Ninety-nine, forty-nine.
Thank you, Paula, we're very fortunate, we're doing what we do. Superintendent Information, Dr. Baldwin?
We have some things coming up here. We've got, uh, this week is, uh, Cancer Awareness Week. We're gonna call it Raven or Not, the basketball game versus Rocky Mountain, if we're able to have a basketball game at the weather permit us. I'll be out of town Thursday, Friday this week, attending next generation superiors training in Durham. We've already mentioned about Dean Shatley being here on Thursday, February the fifth, and then our next board meeting is on Monday, February the fourth.
Now, I'll explain, I'll share with what, standing there, I have one, the school game starts after all the seats there. About six, seven, probably, I go forward. For those that would like to see school board members dressed up to look after the ridiculous tomorrow is your time and place to do so, so, and all for a good cause, so.
Bring your money, son, we've got school...
If the, there's activities going on throughout, the meeting beginning, but the parade at the tutus, as we call it, will take place between the third and fourth quarter of the boys' game.
They're probably leaving, and they're probably being able to game.
I'm trying not to make them go home, so.
Have you worn a tutu?
I am wearing a tutu. And another of your board, fellow board members will be wearing, will be sharing my uniform, so I'm safe.
You may know you're a tutu.
I weigh down.
You don't yell at your cell, just like, man, I want to yell something.
I've been there, done by, I've done by, I've been there, selling.
It's all a good time, it's for a good cause, so, I think we're good. I was, board? There's no reason, Dr. Baldwin, it's time to go into closed session, nobody on agenda, and there's nothing there that has happened since that point, so, anything else, any of the board members need to bring out? Are there any necessary topics we'd like to talk about before we adjourn? If not, I'm telling myself, I thought we'd be here till ten. I'm gonna take a motion to adjourn. So moved. Your second. All in favor, second by saying aye.
Come on, Kelly.
Been sitting long.